I call this meeting of the Conroe ISD Board Meeting to order per Wait, I've got to switch. We had a chain. Oh, wait. Did you? Is this the one you just gave me? I'm sorry, Ms. Furlock. Per Policy Board, Texas Government Code 551.007, any citizens who have-- oh, wait, this is public comment. This is not the call the meeting to order. Sorry, we had a-- had to have a special meeting. We've had some changes. I'm sorry. Not the special meeting. That was the one we needed for. I do want to state that this is a special meeting. I'll get the education code. I can go forward on it for right now. With some changes with this being a special meeting and not a workshop anymore, we had to change the opening comments out. But per the Board policy, we are in order. We have a quorum present. We have Trustee Horton is streaming in, as well as the trustees that are here today. The time is 9:34, and we are officially in session. Trustee May will open us in prayer, and Trustee Semler will lead us in the pledges today.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for bringing us here today. Thank you for our summers where we can refresh and renew. Thank you for all that have gathered here today to celebrate appointments. Thank you for our dedicated employees that work through the summer. Please keep our families and students and employees safe this summer as they travel out on vacations. And, Lord, we just thank you so much for Conroe ISD. I pray this all in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Just to make sure we've covered all the right wording, I just would like to state that the-- let the record show that a quorum of members is present. The meeting has been duly called, and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. All right. Moving on to public comment. I do want to state, just for the trustees, those watching, and for those in the audience, that there has been a shift and a change in some items on the agenda. We're going to do Items 1 and 2, then we're going to skip down to actually Item 5, and then 6, and then come back to legal on Item 4. That way, we can get to our special recognition and appointing of principals and so forth, and not hold up that celebration. So, right now, we're going to go into public comment. Per Board Policy, BED in Texas Government Code, Section 551.007, citizen partis-- any citizen who has signed up may address the Board regarding any topics or items posted on today's agenda. If a citizen has signed up to speak on any matter other than today's posted agenda items, he or she is welcome to make comments to the Board at the Board's regular meeting on July 15, when the Board hears comments about both posted agenda items and non-agenda items. Each speaker will be given two minutes to present their comments to the Board. Screens around the room will display the speaker's time. When the countdown timer reaches zero, the next speaker will be called. Ms. Furlock, please call our first speaker.
Michelle Knuckles.
Good morning, members of the Board. Dr. Landry. Oh, is it? Hello?
It is.
Am I? Okay, go ahead. Okay. I'm here today to respectfully ask that you consider allowing homeschool and private school students the opportunity to try out for UIL sports and activities. Our families contribute significantly to this community. We pay property taxes, often substantial, while also covering the cost of our own curriculum and private school tuitions. In doing so, we save the district thousands of dollars per student each year. Many homeschool families also include children with special needs, families who turn to homeschooling after exhausting efforts to secure adequate services through the district. These families often face repeated denials, delays, and the burden of hiring special education advocates. Their choice to homeschool has also resulted in meaningful cost savings for the district. In 2021, the Texas Legislature passed the Tim Tebow Law, giving students-- school districts, I'm sorry-- giving school districts the option to allow homeschool students to participate in UIL extracurricular activities. Several districts across Texas have already adopted this policy with positive results. We simply ask for that the district allow-- follow their lead and extend this opportunity to our students. And it's just a tryout. It's not a guarantee. We understand that. And I, like, it's, yeah. Thank you for your time and thoughtful consideration. Appreciate it.
Okay, seeing no other speakers, we will move on and go to Human Resources, which would be down on Item 5. Dr. Landry, do we have any presenter on this topic? Or are we ready to have discussion as a Board or vote?
On Human Resources?
On the Human Resources Report?
We, no, just so I'll make the recommendation that the HR report that has been presented in your packet, at this time, we are seeking your approval on those recommendations.
Board, is there any discussion? All those in favor, show by the uplift of hand. Oh, sorry.
I do have a question. Are we doing them one by one or all together?
This is just the report that we received regarding the resignations and the appointments.
Oh, okay. I thought--
No worries. No worries. Okay, so, no further discussion. All those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. And could someone please look at Trustee Horton's for me?
Her hand is up.
Her hand is up. Okay, so, that is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. All right, let the record reflect that we have a 6-0, and that passes. And I should state that Trustee Dawson and Horton are both out of town. And in this particular case, Trustee Horton was able to stream in during this time. Okay, so, moving forward, Assistant Superintendent Appointment, Dr. Landry.
Thank you, Madam President. With Dr. Stickler returning to Caney Creek, we were needing someone to step into the difficult role of Assistant Superintendent of Middle Schools. When thinking about the skills needed to lead and mentor our middle school principals, we were hoping to find someone with experience leading successful campuses. This person meets that standard and then some. She has been a tremendously successful intermediate principal for 27 years. An experience like that is rare. And we are truly fortunate to have had her in CISD for all those years and have her available to us now. It is my honor to be able to recommend Dr. Paula Klepesky to you to be our Assistant Superintendent of Middle Schools.
Any discussion, trustees? Okay, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hand. Okay, and the vote carries 6-0. Oh, I forgot to make a motion. So sorry. I forgot to make the motion. I was so excited to move on. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. And all those in favor now show by the uplift of hands. All right, 6-0. Got excited there. And now you can clap. Look, everyone's standing.
President Odenweller, members of the Board, and Dr. Landry. I'm humbled to be given the opportunity to serve in this capacity. I'm honored to follow Dr. Stickler, who has shown this incredible group of principals how to lead with heart. Dr. Winkler and Dr. Medford have served as gifted role models. I have worked with so many people over the years who have supported and encouraged me, to name a few: Mrs. Denhobel, Dr. Welch, Dr. Stewart, Dr. Stockton, Dr. Gibson, Greg Colson, Chris McCord, and Lisa Garrison. I've had the privilege to work with so many devoted principals who have inspired me. As a servant leader, I could never have gotten to this point without the hard work, devotion, and support from so many. I have been blessed to work alongside dedicated educators who know I live by the fact that we are fortunate to be in this field of education. I often say, "It's not work when you do what you love." There aren't enough words to express my gratitude to those teachers, staff members-- lost my place-- and thousands of students and their parents who have enriched my life. To my former and current Assistant Principals and counselors, I'm grateful for your impact, for your decades of service by my side, Triva Mador, Mary Ann Moat, Terry Rasko, Stephanie Johnson, and Jeremy Williams. You are all my loyal work family. My sincere appreciation to my family, who has sometimes sacrificed, but has always supported me. To Coach Willig, who gave my husband Larry his first job in CISD so many years ago, which ultimately allowed my journey to begin here as well. I'm blessed to have a husband who understands the commitment it takes through his own career as a teacher, coach, and assistant principal. My three kids, Cameron, Kaitlyn, and Connor, are former CISD graduates. My daughter-in-law, Claire, is also a CISD employee, along with my daughter Caitlyn. They're both in schools I worked in previously. Also joining me today is the best leader I know, who taught me to have a strong work ethic and so much more, my father, Charlie Berger, and stepmother Janice. My mother in heaven would be so proud. Our journeys are paid by people who guide us unknowingly. I follow in their footsteps and look forward to continuing the traditions in CISD of excellence. Thank you so much for allowing me this time to share my gratitude. I appreciate it.
It's obvious y'all were so excited, too. All right. Moving on to naming the principal of Oak Ridge High School Ninth Grade Campus. Dr. Landry?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. You know, when thinking about filling a principal's position for a ninth-grade campus, it needs to be someone who is a consummate team player, who can step into a critical role for our students and help them to bridge the gap between junior high and high school. Our recommended person has taught and been an administrator at both junior high and high school levels and bring those skills and experiences with her to this role. She is a dedicated educator who is constantly seeking both personal and campus growth to better serve our students. It is my privilege to recommend to you, Mrs. Wendy Spears, to be the principal of Oak Ridge High School Ninth Grade Campus.
Thank you, Dr. Landry. Trustees, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor-- oh, do I have a motion to accept Wendy Spears for Oak Ridge High School Ninth Grade Campus?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, now, all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. 6-0, the motion carries.
Wow, this is so surreal. President Odenweller, members of the Board, and Dr. Landry. It is truly an honor to stand before you today as the new principal of Oak Ridge Ninth Grade Campus. My journey began 20 years ago, and from day one, Conroe ISD has been more than just a district to me. It's been my community, my family, and my foundation. I am incredibly grateful to be part of a district that does so much for kids and builds up those who serve them. This moment wouldn't be possible without some very special people who believed in me from the start. Dr. Landry? I sat down with you seven years ago. It was my first year as an assistant principal and your first year as principal of the Woodlands High School. You asked me about my future goals, and I said, "First, become associate and then principal." And here I am today. Thank you. Chris McCord, thank you for taking a chance on me when my resume came across that fax machine. And I don't even know if everybody in here even knows what a fax machine is all those years ago. Greg Colson, thank you for giving me my first opportunity as an assistant principal. Paul Fleming, you are an incredible mentor and example of what it means to lead with heart, especially when it comes to kids. Jill Hauser, thank you for believing in me and giving me the opportunity to serve as associate principal. Your trust meant the world. To all of the district leaders, Dr. Stickler and Dr. Medford, colleagues and friends I've crossed paths with over the years, you all have played a role in shaping me. I wish I could name every one of you behind me, but please know that your influence and encouragement have meant more than you'll ever know. Dr. Povich, thank you for this opportunity. And Deshaun Amon, thank you for making me a part of your team. I can't wait to continue the tradition of excellence at Oak Ridge. Josh Hughes, this past year has been one for the books. I've learned so much from you about what it means to lead with your heart and to always put students, teachers, and the community first. Thank you for your guidance and friendship. To my family, you are everything. My husband Tony and my rock, my kids Lauren and Kyle-- Kyle can't be with us today-- both proud Conroe ISD alumni, thank you for walking this journey with me. To my parents, Mom and Terry, who are here today, and my dad and Debbie in Georgetown, and to my mother-in-law Anne, and to my extended family and dear friends, Michelle, Crystal, Laura, and Debbie, your support through the ups and downs has carried me, and I am forever thankful. As I hang up my red and green, I want to thank my Highlander family for a wonderful 20 years. You've helped me grow into the leader I am today. But now, it's time for the next chapter and to spread my wings. I am so excited to join the War Eagle family, and I cannot wait to meet all of you. I promise to leave with love, compassion, and an unwavering commitment to our students, staff, and community. Thank you all for this incredible opportunity, and go War Eagles. Ka-kah.
These are the best days. All right. Name principal of Grand Oaks High School. Dr. Landry?
Thank you, Madam President. As you all know, the principal of Grand Oaks High School is one of those positions which requires a great deal of personality, academic skill, and dedication. The Grizzlies have already shown themselves to be energetic and tenacious and need someone who can keep up with them. We believe that we have found someone who can meet those requirements. This individual has proven himself to be a passionate and dedicated educator with a proven track record of success, comes very highly recommended by both of his former school districts. We are very excited about the potential that he brings with him to the role. It is my pleasure to recommend Dr. Frederick Black to you to be the principal of Grand Oaks High School.
Thank you, Dr. Landry. Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion to accept Dr. Frederick Black Jr. for Grand Oaks High School Principal?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Awesome. And all those in favor, show by the uplift of hands. And the vote carries 6-0. Welcome, Dr. Black.
Good morning, President Odenweller, members of the Board, and Dr. Landry. It is with great excitement and gratitude that I accept the role of principal at Grand Oaks High School. Thank you for entrusting me as the next leader of such an amazing school and community. To my beautiful, God-fearing wife, Kimba, and my incredible sons, Frederick Hunter and Noah, thank you for always supporting me, my career aspirations, and the work I am so passionate about. You are by far my greatest accomplishment and my why. To my amazing mother, thank you for serving as the exemplar for hard work, commitment, and high expectations as both a parent and a middle school math teacher of 36 years. She retired in 2004. She'll be 80 in March of 2026, and she is still subbing today. So, they can't get rid of. Thank you to all the leaders I've had the pleasure to serve with in my career. Thank you for always supporting me and growing me into the leader I am today. I've learned so much from you, and I will continue to carry those invaluable lessons with me always. And to the Grand Oaks High School and Conroe ISD community, I look forward to learning the Conroe ISD way and the Grand Oaks age of the growl. I look forward to partnering with you to build on the incredible accomplishments and achievements of Grizzly Nation. I look forward to getting to know you, and I look forward to you getting to know me. I am committed to leading with energy, empathy, and excellence while fulfilling the Grand Oaks mission to equip with skills, empower with purpose, and impact the community. Thank you, and go Grizzlies.
Okay, moving on after those exciting things. If those of you that are done with your appointments need to move on, feel free. You're welcome to move on and go celebrate, or you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. However, we're going to move on to our non-- oh, there you go. See? I gave you permission. I love that. Peace out. We'll give them just a minute.
Ms. Garza, that has nothing to do with you, I'm sure.
Nothing. That just shows they have complete faith and trust in you because they're leaving.
One second. I'm not going to--
Yes, ma'am. No, do your chance to do. Yes. Those were some big ones.
We're almost there. Dr. -- I mean, Chief Lakebuck is back there, ready to just shut the door behind them. All right. We're going to jump down to our non-action items and start with Receive Preliminary 2025-2026 Budget Overview. Ms. Garza, as you come forward, I do want to say thank you to you and your team for the hard work you've put into analyzing the legislative session and its impact on our district and its budget. And we're eager to hear what you've got to share with us.
Okay, that's fine.
Not a problem at all. So, back to what I was saying, Ms. Garza. We do truly thank you and your team for sifting through the legislative session. The reason we postponed our June 3 meeting to today was to give you all that time, and we look forward to hearing what you have to say. I know that the employees of the district do, and the taxpayers do as well, so.
Absolutely. Well, good morning, President Odenweller, members of the Board, and Dr. Landry. It's my pleasure to be here this morning to provide you with an update on the 25-26 preliminary budget. I have a couple of special guests I'd like to introduce that are with me at the table today. Mrs. Paula Green, who is our Executive Director of Human Resources, and then Ms. Amy Campbell, who is the Director of HR Services for Tasby, will be here with us this morning as well. And she was going to facilitate our conversation surrounding the pay plan and our compensation plan recommendations for next year. Amy has been working with the district for over 10 years. She is a highly regarded expert in terms of compensation around the state, so we are very fortunate to have her on our team and here with us today. I'd also like to recognize the finance staff that are here with us this morning. Like you said, I would not be able to do what I do every day without this group of people here. And so, they are seated in the front row here behind me, as well as our Director of Payroll. Rachel Jimenez is here today as well, and she's anxious to hear the feedback that you have regarding the compensation plan. As you can imagine, there are a lot of things that will need to happen between now and actual-- in the hands of employees' paychecks on 9/1, when the raise goes into effect. So, it's a busy time of year for us. We also have a special student guest in the audience with us this morning as well. Arif Ghol is here. He is an incoming senior at the Woodlands High School and looking to pursue a potential career in finance. So, he is interning with us through the EFTA organization for the next couple of weeks. So, we are going to try to teach him all things school finance-related and help him. And so, we're happy to have him here and happy to be able to support that program as well. And then, like you said, I'd like to thank the employees that are watching today for their commitment to this district. I know it's been a rough couple of years in terms of compensation. And hopefully, the information they hear today will bring them some relief and just to know that we appreciate all that they do each and every day. So, thank them for being here. And then, Dr. Medford and her team, of course, for all their work on the budget. And then, of course, Dr. Landry and his guidance over the last several weeks in terms of budget conversations. So, we're going to kind of cover 6A and 6B concurrently this morning. I'm going to start off with the budget presentation, and then I'm going to hand it over to Amy to talk about pay plan. And then, I'll follow up and finish up with the budget conversation. I feel like this moment is six years in the making. We haven't had a significant school finance bill since 2019. And so, implementing a bill of this magnitude takes time. It's a process. We are learning every day. Amy has been around the state making presentations, you know, about the implementation of pay plan, stuff that came out of HB2. And so, I just ask for your grace. As we work through this, there are some things that we may not know until '26-'27, such as some of the special ed components or the funding that won't, you know, aren't even outlined yet. So, some of the funding impacts, we won't know. And so, what's built into the budget for next year are the things that we do know. So, we'll continue to work through it and learn as much as we can each and every day. Sorry, we're looking for the clicker.
You have such a lovely vanna.
All right, here we go. We're good, Russ. We're good. All right. So, starting off, just kind of a reminder of some of the challenges that we faced coming into this budget season. Obviously, it was a legislative year. We were working our way out of a deficit budget that was adopted for the '24-'25 school year. The formulas as they existed at the time did not have any mechanism to provide a raise for employees or address inflation. And then, of course, supporting our growing special education population is always a concern. And then, the unknown impact of possible education savings accounts. For the most part, the legislature did address all of these items. Some not to the level that we had hoped for, but we are thankful for any funding that is coming our way. So, we will-- we're going to walk through So we will -- we're going to walk through kind of a legislative recap, and then we'll take through House Bill 2 and some of the highlights of that bill. So the 89th legislative session began on January 14 of 2025. It was 140 days in length. It ended on June 2 of 2025. There were over 9,000 bills that were filed. 1,300-plus bills and joint resolutions passed. That's a 14% passing rate. The governor's last day to sign bills was Sunday, January 22. And then major financial components that were addressed in this session relating to school finance were, of course, teacher compensation and school finance, property tax cuts, and then education savings accounts or school choice. So looking at House Bill 2, $4.2 billion was allocated to school funding to provide raises for classroom teachers. $3.4 billion of that is for teacher pay, $800 million to increase pay for support staff. Those are for employees that are not in the classroom. $2.6 billion to address funding gaps. The state created a new allotment for basic costs of $1.3 billion, which is calculated at $106 per enrolled students to address rising costs in specific areas, and I'll go through those in a little bit. $850 million for special education funding. House Bill 2 does include all of the provisions that were in Senate Bill 568. So that was a bill that was introduced by Senator Bettencourt that was also passed, but it does include all of those components in House Bill 2. And then $1.7 billion for targeted programs. That includes CTE, teacher preparation, early learning. And then that last item doesn't impact us, but it is part of that total, small and midsize allotment and charter schools. So a total of $8.5 billion of additional dollars that were becoming to public schools in this biennium. So we are thankful for what the state has done in terms of sending funding our way. Property tax relief continues to be a priority of our legislatures. They have allocated nearly $51 billion of the budget in this biennium to maintain cuts that were enacted in previous sessions, as well as provide new relief. Senate Bill 4 is a bill that was introduced that will increase the homestead exemption for homeowners from $100,000 to $140,000. That is a cost of $2.7 billion to the state. And then Senate Bill 23 increases the over-65 homestead exemption from $10,000 to $60,000 at a cost of $1.2 billion. Those two Senate bills are pending constitutional amendment and will have to be approved by the voters in November. We do anticipate that will happen. They are providing a hold harmless for the district for our Maintenance and Operations Fund to make up the loss of funding as a result of those increased exemptions. So now moving into the funding components of House Bill 2 that are generating additional funding for us. The basic allotment increase of $55. So the basic allotment moved from $6,160 to $6,215. The state created what's known as a teacher retention allotment. This allotment generates funding for districts to use to provide raises for classroom teachers. So if you're a district with enrollment of greater than 5,000 students for teachers with three to four years of experience, the allotment generates an additional $2,500 per teacher and then five-plus years of experience at $5,000. This is a permanent teacher raise that will be funded this year and beyond. They also created a staff support retention allotment. This is calculated at $45 times the adjusted ADA. And this is to provide raises for employees that are not considered classroom teachers or those teachers that are in zero to two years of experience. So this could also include librarians, nurses, counselors, all those that are not considered classroom teachers. And then our allotment for basic costs. This is a new allotment the state created to help with those rising costs in the areas that you see here, transportation, utilities, property insurance. And that is calculated at $106 per enrolled student. School safety allotment increases. The per-campus amount changed to $33,540, up from $10,000, and then $20 per ADA. And then special education funding. The component that we do know for next year that will be implemented is the reimbursement for individual evaluations at $1,000 each. The '26-'27 changes in terms of moving to that intensity-based model with the eight tiers of service. We will not know the actual impact of that funding until that is outlined by TEA and defined by them. So we will work through that. That will involve changes to PEMS reporting and all sorts of things. So that is why they delayed that a year, because it's going to be a pretty significant change in terms of what districts are reporting to the state so that they can calculate the allotment. And then they have expanded the teacher incentive allotment to add a new category called acknowledged with a range of $3,000 to $9,000. These changes will not be in effect until the '26-'27 school year to give districts time to work on their locally-defined programs. They have changed the range on some of the other categories, recognized, exemplary, and master. The goal previously with TIA was to hope that 30% of your teachers could qualify for this additional funding, and now they've expanded this to 50% of the teachers. So we're looking forward to the expansion of this program and being able to offer more of our teachers' payout through the teacher incentive allotment program. And then there's some additional miscellaneous things. They've created a new partner prep allotment that will help us with additional funding for various teacher pathways. We don't have a lot of details on this yet, but we will continue to work with HR as information becomes available. They have expanded the definition of students that generate the dyslexia allotment to students that are receiving accommodations for dyslexia, not necessarily in their IEP. So this will generate some additional dyslexia funding for us. And then ROTC is now eligible for CTE allotment funding. So those are just some of the miscellaneous ones. So kind of putting this all together in terms of just what House Bill 2 is generating for us in terms of additional revenue. The basic allotment increased $5 million. Teacher retention allotment, $19.6 million. That staff retention allotment, $2.7. Allotment for basic costs, $7.8. School safety, $1.9. That special ed FIE allotment, $2.5 million, and those other miscellaneous funding categories of $1.5. So $41 million of additional funding that is coming our way. If you remember from the April Board Workshop, at that time, we shared that we were looking at a deficit of around $4 million. So this has by far helped us get out of the hole and then be able to do the things that we're going to recommend to you today. So we are fortunate that we had kind of dug ourselves three-quarters of the way out of the deficit budget before even knowing what House Bill 2 was going to bring us. So we're in a much better position than some districts are. So we are fortunate for that and for your leadership with that as well. So thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Yes, ma'am. Regarding the special education, $850 million. So I see that you have $2.5 million, and I know that we're not rolling out the changes in the tiers until next year. Is that our portion of the eight point?
No, that is only our portion of the FIE allotment. So in terms of trying to estimate what we think the rest could be, it's hard because I can look at the 850, maybe divided by what the total state allotment is now, and apply that percentage to ours. It would put us in the $8 million range. You know, if you'll recall from our workshop in April, our funding gap was around 40. So it gets us something, but doesn't by no means get us all the way there. But I'm estimating in the $4 to $5 million range of additional funding for special education. And like I said, we won't know for sure, but...
So the bulk of it, though, will be next year?
Yes, that is correct.
The next school year.
Okay, thank you.
I do have a question.
Yes.
Would -- and this not anything against Nicole -- trustee May asking the question right then. Would -- I want to know, because I do have some questions. Do you want us to ask you questions as we -- as you finish each section? Or would you rather us just wait and go back to them?
You can ask them as we go along. That's completely fine.
Yes, that's fine. Go ahead.
All right, so looking at our preliminary budget assumptions, we're still using student enrollment of 73,500, our ADA percentage at 93%. We are projecting certified property value growth of 5%. However, this is before the implementation of Senate Bill 4 and Senate Bill 23. I'll go into a little more detail about that later on in the presentation. And then our projected tax rate, I'm projecting the tax rate to remain the same at .9496. I know we talked at the April meeting about additional compression. We have gotten some information recently from the state on how they're going to do that calculation that has changed from prior session, so I will walk you through that as well. This is our attendance data for the upcoming budget year and the previous nine years. You'll see 73,500 students. That puts us at ADA of 68,355 projected. This is just our enrollment trend in a graph format. Our special education student count, as predicted, we did see a pretty significant growth. We ended the school year at 11,236 students. In our special education program, that's an increase of 2,044 students, or a 22% increase. You will see this later on as we talk about personnel additions that we really tried to prioritize positions to support this growing population. I'm going to get into the weeds a little bit on tax compression because I want you to understand why we're projecting the tax rate to remain the same, which is different from what we shared in April. So each summer, the state calculates what's known as our maximum compressed tax rate. This is the Tier 1 portion of our MNO tax rate. They do this through a process known as the local property value study. So local compression happens when your local property value, overall values, grow by in excess of 2.5%. So every summer in late July, after we receive certified values from the appraisal district, we report to the state what our total property values are compared to the year prior. They look at what the growth percentage is year over year, and then that's how the MCR is calculated. Well, they have changed their methodology on how they're going to handle that calculation this legislative session with the exemptions that are going to be put in place. So last session, when the homestead exemption increased from 40,000 to 100,000. When we reported our local property values through that summer study that they do in late July, we reported the year-over-year values at the 40,000 homestead exemption for both years, so that we were comparing apples to apples. Well, what happened when we did this is it yielded more compression than the state was anticipating. And so what happens when local values or local tax rates are compressed? If you think back to the cup, we put in less to the cup because we're collecting less money. The state's having to put in more to the cup, right? So because of this increased compression that they weren't anticipating, this time around, they're changing how they're going to collect that data. So this summer, when we provide our data to them in late July, we're going to report 2024 values at the $100,000 and $10,000 homestead exemption, which is currently in place. The tax year '25 values will be reported at the new exemption amount, 140 and 60. So if we look at what 5% growth in property value would generate based on our overall property, it would generate an additional $2.7 billion in value. Well, with the changes from Senate Bill 4 and Senate Bill 23 with the increased exemptions, we're going to lose about $4.4 billion in value. So we will see -- we are projecting to see a net decrease in our overall property values. So when we report through the local property value survey, we will actually see a decrease. Therefore, no additional compression will happen because compression only happens when you grow in excess of 2.5%. So I just wanted you to kind of understand why the change was made, and this is information that was just released when House Bill 2 was passed. So we were not aware of this change when we presented at the April workshop. And this will impact districts across the state, right? Because this is going to be handled the same way for all school districts.
Ms. Garza, just while we're here, I think it's very important. Are you saying that we are projecting that 4.4 -- is that 4.4 billion?
Yes.
That -- how did you get that number?
That is the number of local homestead exemptions we have times the increase of 40,000, and then the over-65 exemptions that we have times the increase of 50.
So you are accounting for the over-65 homeowner versus anyone that's not going to meet that?
So the changes that will happen as a result of those increased homestead exemptions will be greater than the increase that we will normally see with our 5% growth. And that's why we're going backwards in terms of overall property value for the district. Now, on the MNO side, it doesn't matter because they will hold us harmless for that, right? So we're just putting less in the cup, and they're putting more in the cup because -- to get us to the entitlement. So it's a shared responsibility between local districts and state. Okay? So this is our tax rate history for the last five years. Like you'll see, that tax rate will remain at .9496 for next year. We won't know definitively until July, but I can say with a lot of certainty that that is probably where we will end up, unless something drastic happens with property values between now and then. But we usually see a pretty consistent trend in terms of preliminary values between now and certification date on July 25. So this is our projected tax rate by Maintenance and Operations and Debt Service. It will remain the same at .9496. So now I'm going to get into the weeds a little bit more about our debt service tax rate. So when we presented the 2023 bond program, we were presenting it based on a projected level of property value growth over a period of time, right? Over the period of the bond. We were projecting a certain percentage of property value growth. Well, given the new homestead exemptions that are going to be put in place if the voters approve it in November, the state will only hold us harmless for debt that has been issued and paid as of 9/1 of 2025. So each month when I present the bond update to you, it shows in the bottom left-hand corner of the slide that we have -- voters approved $1.9 billion. We have issued $1.2 billion. So we have $780 million worth of bonds that will be issued over the next two years. The state will not hold us harmless for that, the portion of the value that we're going to lose to support those bonds. So I'm only bringing this to your attention because this might be something we need to look at next summer. We'll be okay for this year for our debt service tax rate, but next year, because the state has changed the rules on us halfway through our bond program and increased those exemptions, it could increase the tax rate for next year on the debt side. It all depends on what we see in terms of increase in value for next year for property value. But in the event that you see an increase or we're recommending an increase, that is the reason why. And I said 9/1 of '25, we do not have time to issue bonds between now and 9/1 and make a payment on it. We don't have capacity in the current year to make a payment on additional bond issuances. So this is just one of those unforeseen things that, you know, when the bond program was approved and projected, we didn't know the state was going to come in and do this increased exemption amount. And so we'll have to see if we can get the property value growth to support the 28 cent tax rate for the remainder of the bond. Does that make sense? Okay. So now looking at our projected revenue increase overall from last year's budget to this year's budget, we will be looking at an actual decrease in property tax revenue as a result of that loss in value for the increased homestead exemptions of just over $11 million. Our state funding increased from House Bill 2, $41 million. And then other increase in state funding, this is the hold harmless correction that we did for the over-65 as a result of Senate Bill 12 in the last legislative session. And then just the hold harmless for the new tax compression that's taking place will generate an additional $27 million in state funding. Our teacher incentive allotment, this is essentially a pass-through. This is the revenue side of that program increasing. And then interest earnings, I'm recommending that we take $1.5 million out of our budget for interest earnings as interest rates will continue to decline over the next year. And then TRS on behalf, again, that's a pass-through. There should -- there will be an offsetting expenditure increase to this as well. So we're estimating a total revenue increase of just under $61 million for next year. So now moving into the compensation plan. HB2 salary increase, we talked about this earlier. Just to refresh, districts with enrollment of 5,000 or more, which is obviously the category we fall in, this teacher retention allotment generates the 2,500 for those years of experience, and then 5,000. So we're estimating that teacher retention allotment would generate $19.6 million for us, and then the staff support retention allotment at $2.7 million. So our pay plan recommendations, this process began several months ago. We began working with TASB. Some of the priorities that we were working through as we were looking at our pay plan, obviously, teachers prioritizing a raise for teachers, and that is in legislation now coming from House Bill 2. We wanted to support other people that are on our teacher pay plan. This is librarians, instructional coaches. We wanted to be able to provide them with the same raise as teachers do because they are on our teacher pay plan, so that was one of the things we prioritized. And then differentiating pay for our special education pairs that are in those high-needs instructional settings. We moved them around on the pay plan to get them additional compensation. And then also prioritizing our hourly and lowest-paid employees. This would be our operations departments, our instructional support staff, our paraprofessionals that are helping in the classroom, our campus secretaries, all of those hourly and lower-paid employees. We wanted to make sure that we prioritize them in terms of the compensation increase. And then we added a new pay structure for our technology employees to stay competitive in that market. That's one of those areas where we need to stay competitive. We all know what it's like when the internet isn't working and things are not functioning technology-wise, so we did that in order to stay competitive in the marketplace with those types of positions. And then kind of setting the groundwork for HB2 implementation and raise cycle. Because the legislature is telling us, we're giving you this teacher retention allotment, it all has to be provided for teacher raises next year. In '26-'27, they will give us the money to maintain the raise, but they will not give us any more money to increase salaries. So we're going to kind of be in this cycle in our district of providing raises every other year. Other districts might be doing different things, but given the funding that we have, we do not have enough where we could set aside any kind of substantial raise for teachers or other staff for next year. So kind of the goal going into this is we were going to try to front-load as much as we could into '25-'26, knowing that in '26-'27, there would not be a raise, but we could potentially offer a retention stipend for our employees for '25-'27 with some of the excess fund balance that we have. So this is kind of a change in... So this is kind of a change in mindset from what we're used to, but given the way the legislature is providing funding for raises and the way that it's to be given to, to teachers and other staff, this is kind of the cycle that we're going to have to move into. So as we move into our compensation plan structure, we're going to be talking in terms of pay groups. So those of you that have not been through this process before, we kind of divide employees into what we call pay groups on our compensation plan. So as we work through this and Amy begins to speak about it, you'll kind of know what, what this means. Obviously, the employees that are on our teacher pay scale, based on years of experience, you're used to seeing that, we'll show it to you later. Our administrative support staff, those are like our campus secretaries, paraprofessionals in this building, our instructional support staff, obviously are those instructional paras and another, other instructional non-exempt staff. At the campus auxiliary is our operations department. That's child nutrition, maintenance, custodial. Our police department is what it is. Administrative business is primarily employees in this building. Administrative education would be our counselors. All of our support staff for special education, our LSSPs, diagnosticians, principals at the campuses, and then our technology staff, which is that new pay plan, would be our technology services department.
Excuse me, what pay group does transportation fall in?
It would be an auxiliary.
Thank you.
So now I'm going to hand it over to Amy to, to walk us through the compensation plan.
Good morning. I was thinking, when Karen first mentioned that I had been working with y'all for many years, I was counting the years, and I think I'm on year fourteen presenting to the district. So I feel like I've been able to see y'all grow and change over the years. I'm also happy to answer questions along the way. I know some of you have heard this several times and others, it's very new, so feel free to ask for any clarification. As Karen mentioned too, I'm excited to talk about a single district pay plan after two weeks of talking about HB Two. So every year, we work with HR and finance to collect all of your employee data. We then match it up to our salary survey data that we collect each year from all the districts in the state. We have data from about seven hundred school districts for nearly two hundred jobs. But we also purchase non-school market data sources because there are lots of jobs that exist outside of K-12. And so we want to be sure we're offering you a full picture of what market competitiveness looks like. We always recommend structure changes and employee pay changes that align with what the district is looking for in terms of strategic choices, where you want to focus your funds, and also to address problems or challenges that the district has had over the past year. And I know Karen talked through those, I'm going to repeat some of them, but just provides you some specifics about what we're recommending. As a reminder, for all of your positions that are in pay grades with a minimum midpoint and maximum, the goal would be to have people spread within those ranges. It can be really easy over time to, when pay increases aren't given at any substantial level or aren't given regularly, that employees get squished or compressed towards the bottom of those ranges. You'll see that the district has experienced a little bit of that when we look at the market comparisons. And so part of the benefit of the pay increases that we're talking about today will be helping spread people throughout their ranges and really just get closer to market value. When we talk about market value, we're talking about the market median, which is the middle value of every data point for any particular job. So that means that half of the peers will be paying above that on average and half will be paying below that. So getting to the market rate is really the middle of the road. There may be certain jobs or certain positions that, you know, the district wants to pay a more premium rate for, and so we talk through that as part of our process as well. And, you know, individuals will be paid below that rate or above that rate depending on their individual experience, credentials, skills, and so on. So the market list has remained mostly the same for many years now. You've got thirteen local peers that you compete with for teachers, hourly staff, and salaried professionals. However, for your top-level central administration positions, given you are so much larger than many of your peers, it's important to look at similarly sized districts to make sure that we're comparing apples to apples because a director in your district is not the same as a director in Willis. And so we want to be sure we're looking at large districts across the state to ensure that we're comparing the right number of hats to the right number of hats. And I mentioned the non-school market data. We purchased that from two separate sources and factor that in for positions that you could find in any industry, not just K-12 education. So each year, we look at teacher demographics. It's really just a distribution of experience for your current teachers and librarians. And really, this practically is anyone who's on your teacher's scale, but for the most part, those are teachers and librarians. Your data looks very much like any given school district in Texas. There's nothing surprising or different about your experience distribution. And for a large and growing district, we often see a higher percentage of inexperienced teachers. So Conroe ISD is doing a great job finding a wide variety and keeping a wide variety of experienced teachers. You can also see that in your newly hired teachers and librarians for twenty-four, twenty-five. This may be a little bit, a higher percentage of less experienced teachers than you're accustomed to seeing, but this is still a very good distribution compared to many of the districts we looked at this year. And we work with about two hundred compensation districts each year, and this is the one of the, this is one of the best distributed experience charts for new hires that we've seen, which again is a little surprising for a large district. And I guess I should give kudos to Paula and her team for being able to find experienced new hires. So year over year, we show you the same chart, and the orange line is the Conroe ISD average teacher salary at each of those benchmark years of experience, and the turquoise line is your local market median. Over the years, you, the, the district has become accustomed to seeing the orange line above the turquoise line, or at least even with. Over the past couple of years, there's a little more white space between those lines than I think the district has wanted to see. So just, I guess to highlight that over the past couple of years, your distance from market has increased, where you're paying further below market median for each of those years of experience. The bottom row shows you the dollar difference in annual salary from market median. And as a reminder, that's the middle value of market, and that ranges from fourteen hundred to just over twenty-one hundred dollars. I want to also call out that while that difference does not sound insurmountable, we have to remember that it's that difference plus a regular annual increase to bridge the gap because everyone else is giving regular annual increases as well. And given the increases that we're about to talk about, I would, in a normal year, say you're going to do a lot of catch-up, but all of your peers are giving the same increases because it's passed through dollars from the state. And some of your smaller districts across the state are giving even bigger increases than y'all are giving. So this may be something, once the dust settles from HB Two teacher pay changes, that next year, we'll want to look closely at and see where there's opportunity to, to make some improvements. So another area we look at is teaching area market stipends. These are kind of economic incentives to help encourage recruitment and retention in the hardest-to-fill teaching assignments across the state. More and more peers are, of your peers are offering secondary math and science stipends. And you don't currently offer those, but that's an area we've been watching for a few years, and in the future, that may be something you consider. But one of the changes we are recommending is high-needs special ed stipend increases to get closer to, even with market for next year. Those are just some very tough positions to fill and keep. And so while a thousand dollars doesn't sound like a huge improvement in pay for those staff, I think it will just put you in a better competitive position with your peers. So now we're going to look at market comparisons. There are, in each of these cases, several job titles that are captured. For the first two rows, you'll see it's thirty-four and thirty-nine positions that are factored into those comparisons. I want to, I guess, explain that employee pay to market is your pay compared to market pay, and then the average of all of those differences. And the pay grade midpoint to market is your structure compared to market pay. Ideally, we would want those two to be balanced, where your average pay and what you're offering for incoming staff in terms of the range within which you pay are both competitive to market. You'll note that your employee pay to market is not far off. You're within four percentage points of market median for each of those, but your structures are generally stronger to market. And what that means is that the structures are competitive, but people are paid lower in the range. And so the goal, again, would be to push them further into the range and improve their pay. The other teaching professionals are sort of a weird mix of ag teachers and band directors, ROTC teachers, and so there are some other factors impacting their pay, like the federal government tells you what you need to pay for JROTC teachers. And so those, I wouldn't sweat too much about those differences. But the non-exempt pay groups, again, when we look at that first column, employee pay to market, the district has done a good job in aligning pay for police and auxiliary, but administrative support and particularly instructional support are further away from market. Some of the changes we're recommending for the special ed paras in high-needs assignments will bridge that gap and gets you a lot better aligned with market. But generally, your structures are competitive. It's more about getting individual salaries increased and, and pay rates increased. So I know Karen talked about these, and so I won't go into great detail, but I, I think I wanted to clarify or add that TEA has said very clearly that they expect to see districts incorporate these allotments into their teacher pay structure. And so I think they will anticipate seeing those changes reflected in whatever teacher pay structure is adopted statewide. Another, a couple of perks that were in the bill, any changes you make to salaries using these allotment funds will not violate the constitutional prohibition on gift of public funds and will not violate contract law. So it's not negatively impacting anything you've already done or will do in the next month or two. And all of these salary increases from allotment funds are considered credible compensation for TRS purposes. We just verified with them this morning that that takes effect, you know, right away with the next school year. And so all of that should be credible compensation, which I know has been a challenge for some teachers who are nearing retirement when some of these state-funded increases aren't considered. Teacher is narrowly defined using the classroom teacher definition in Education Code, but does include any uncertified teachers. So just to clarify, that's why librarians and other instructional adjacent positions aren't entitled to the allotment. But what we've calculated for you based on district strategy and, and goal is to align the pay increases for instructional adjacent staff with those teacher retention allotment amounts. Karen already covered all that, so I'll skip right to the recommendations. We have probably, I don't know, four or five different iterations of this along the way just to reflect changes and that arising from HB Two. But we've recommended structure adjustments to help align pay with all of the increases that are passed through to your educators, and then the educator career pathway adjustments for those counselors and instructional coaches and others who are connected to teachers in that pathway. The new technology pay structure will be super beneficial to the district insofar as we can compartmentalize technology pay, and it allows you to be a little more nimble in adjusting pay ranges and what you post to fill positions, and then how individual pay is adjusted to better align with market. Technology market is notoriously volatile, and so that'll give you more opportunity year over year to track with market, kind of like you did with police when that structure was created. And then those pay grade upgrades for special ed paras generate some pretty significant adjustments for those staff, and so that certainly will be beneficial for recruitment and retention efforts. The general pay increase that we're calculating is a four percent general pay increase for your admin and education, your admin business, technology, and police pay plans, and then six percent for your experienced teachers and admin support. And teachers is misleading because there's actually an average of four percent for your newer teachers and seven percent for your experienced teachers. But the adjustments that we're recommending, we want to be sure everyone makes at least one percent above their proposed minimum. Any continuing staff will have gained a full year of experience. We want to make sure that they make more than incoming new staff with no prior experience. Strategic adjustments are just designed to help push individuals further into their pay structure to address some of those compression issues we talked about. The teacher pay equity adjustments are probably the biggest category of adjustments you'll see this year. And in practice, that means that the four percent pay increase that we're calculating for your admin education group is not enough to bridge the gap of the teacher retention allotment amount. And so your counselors and others in that pathway will get the same level of increase as teachers do, and that's captured as an adjustment you'll see in a minute. And then placement scale adjustments are just a, a way to spread pay based on years of experience for all of your hourly staff. That is a way for HR to manage placement of staff and just ensure internal equity, where if Karen and I have the same years of experience and the same pay grade, we make at least the same amount. And I mentioned the high-needs special ed teaching area stipend. Increasing that by a thousand dollars would generate a $280,000 cost to the district. So there's a lot of little numbers up here, but the far-left column are the pay groups and the high-needs special ed stipends are captured at the bottom there. That next column is a general pay increase, and for teachers and librarians, that's for five-plus years, a seven percent pay increase and four percent for your one, two, three, four years. For the rest of the groups, it's either six percent for your hourly staff or four percent for your exempt salaried. And then the adjustments, again, are the educator career pathway adjustments. And then for instructional support, most of those are for your special ed paras. And the total budget impact is six point four percent, but still within the cost boundaries that the district has set out. I think that's all I have for you, but happy to answer questions. That's a lot, right?
Yes, and I know we were holding as many of our questions as possible for, so that Trustee Nelson, before she had to leave for an unavoidable change in her work schedule, we were trying to let you all do most of your speaking. I know we still have more in the presentation. Do you all want to stop to ask some questions at this point, or do you want to keep till we finish up?
I'm okay. Let's keep going.
Okay, let's keep going.
Let me ask a question. Are the HB Three goals, are those going to affect any of this information that we just received? Is that what you're, is that what's next?
No, no, no. No, we're, I'm just finishing the budget presentation.
Oh, you're not done?
No.
Good.
All right, so this is just a summary of the recommendations that Amy just shared. Thirty-three point one million total pay increases. About twenty-two of that will be supported through those two allotments from the state, the teacher retention allotment and the staff support allotment. This is our proposed teacher hiring schedule for next year. For some of you, this looks familiar. For some of you, it might be new, but if you follow it from the left to the right, the left-hand column of this schedule shows the years of experience the teacher had in twenty-four, twenty-five. And if you follow it across, it shows their current salary and then the HB Two funded increase that we are proposing, and then any unfunded increases for those zero- to two-year teachers. And then the far-right-hand column would be the salary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. I'll give you a little time to digest this if you need to look.
So this is saying that we are going to raise the year zero to two teachers, twenty-seven hundred, is that right?
Yes. So starting teacher pay would be $64,000. And then those teachers that are brand-new this year, well, we're brand-new in twenty-four, twenty-five, we'll see a $2700 increase going into twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six.
And I neglected to clarify that, Karen. So the reason we were calculating the $2700 increase is because that's four percent for those new year, early-career teachers. That way, they get the same four percent as other staff. At twenty-five hundred, it would be slightly below that.
And that will align us with market value?
We'll see. I think because all of your peers are also getting the twenty-five hundred and five thousand, you may stay right where you're at. But I think you are doing a lot more for your teacher-adjacent positions than some of your peers will. And so I think while it's not going to, I, I don't think it's going to leapfrog you above peers for teachers, I think it will make you much more competitive for some of your other positions where you are a little bit below.
Excellent, thank you.
Can I ask just one clarifying question? Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll put it by the microphone.
Okay. So looking at the funding, the twenty-seven hundred, that's coming from local, but when we're looking at the five thousand, that's the state, so we're not putting any additional local funding into the teachers' five years or more, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
By doing that, Marianne makes a good point. By doing that, could we, could we bring that gap up a little if we were to? Because you're saying that even at Because you're saying that even at making these standard increases, the 2,500 and the 5,000, we're not going to close that gap that's been created over the past two, roughly two-plus years that we haven't been increasing that standard pay?
Well, like Amy said, yes. We're all kind of moving at the same level this year because the state has kind of directed us to the raise amount. Now, could we put additional local funds into those more experienced teacher years? Yes, we could, but at a cost, obviously, because this is our largest group of employees. It would be at a significant cost, but yes, that is something that we could do.
Right. Yeah. Because we haven't done that in the past, how many years has it been? Two or three? I forget. Since we gave a raise?
Well, two years.
Two. So that would really be just going back and backtracking to bring that number up so that we don't lose pace with the market value or with the standard that the other districts that we're competing against have not, they haven't lost that momentum, but we have, is what I'm hearing.
I would, yes, I think you're right, and I think looking at, in '25, '26, when we look at the salary data that we get, I think it's going to be kind of all over the place. I think every district who is your size has to give the 25 and 5. I think where the domino effect is, if you give more to your five-plus-year teachers and we try to keep those educator career pathway positions connected, it increases what you have to make in terms of adjustments for your counselors and assistant principals and all those two. So I think adding just $1,000 here generates a much more significant cost for your admin.
It would be a ripple, but it's something we haven't done, whereas other districts have been doing that for the past couple of years. So that's where we've lost our momentum. Right?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Also, I think it's important to look at a couple of things. One, when a counselor moves up, their pay increases, or if they've been a teacher and didn't go straight into counseling, their pay increases. But a teacher who has dedicated their lives to being within the classroom and choosing to stay in that calling and not move up only gained $7,000 from their starting pay to their last year at 25 years of service. I do recognize that there's that ripple effect, and I mean, I think everyone in this room is going to laugh when I say this, we're not your typical board when we look at things. I want to be sure that we incentivize those that do have the calling to stay in the classroom and be rewarded, even if we aren't raising the pay across the board for every field in that ripple effect. I'm not, I'm not saying that they're not entitled or that they're not worthy or whatever, but one of the reasons we, I don't, I don't want to lose those veteran teachers. Those veteran teachers are what make the strength of our largest chunk of new teachers. And so to me, I feel like, to what trustee Duncan was saying, I think it's important for us to focus on those veteran teachers and incentivizing them to stay in the class and not, in order to make a better wage or whatever, to move up and to incentivize them to be there because they make all the difference on the campuses. And so, again, I'd just like to throw that out, that it doesn't always have to be a ripple effect. I know those are missed.
And I agree, I agree with that sentiment. President Odenweller?
Did you all go?
I heard that, but I agree with that sentiment, President Odenweller.
Thank you. I just, I don't want to make that anyone else feel lesser or not as important, but I do think we need to recognize and put a value on those teachers that stayed dedicated to staying in the classroom. We just named a school after one, Lynn Cartwright, who spent 40 years in the classroom and chose to never move up because their calling was in the classroom. Had I stayed in the classroom or in teaching, that would have been my calling. I had, I had, that was my joy, was being with those students and turning them on to learning and getting them excited, and we need those, we need to, and $7,000 from year one to 27, 25 years of teaching is just not respectful in education. I'm not saying the district, I'm not blaming the district. I'm just saying we've got to see, and I'm glad to see the state recognize that. That was one of the things that I kept, I've been saying for two legislative sessions, we have to, to support those veteran teachers, so, sorry.
And I think the state's initiative to expand the teacher incentive allotment speaks to that as well, because if they are high-performing, long-term teachers, if we can get 50% of our teachers' TIA money, that's significant as well.
100% agree.
That is a little bit limiting, though, because we don't have it in all of our schools. So I do see that that is happening for some of our schools, but that's not across the board.
And that is one of the things that, so my questions when we were talking about teacher allotment, I wanted to go back to that, and we might need to revisit that more closely and dig in on it. But I don't understand why we do, I mean, I do understand why we're trying to incentivize teachers to be in Title I schools or lower, you know, more difficult-to-staff schools by doing our TIA, but I know there are other districts that do it differently, and the teachers that perform in the 30% or 50% are the ones that actually, across the district, are the ones that actually get incentivized, not just at specific schools. And I know that brings a whole nother set of challenges, like I said, of staffing at more difficult-to-staff schools or locations, not even the challenging population or demographics or learning or whatever, but it does come, location. We've got some schools way out in the middle of, and it's a long distance for some of our teachers to travel because they aren't necessarily living in those communities right next to it. We experienced that partly with the Kenny Creek area and staffing that location. It's starting to improve because we have developments out there and people are moving into those developments, teachers are moving into those developments. But anyway, I digress.
Does the teachers incentive allotment incentivize our teachers with longevity more than it does our new teachers, or is it even across the board?
It's not based upon the years of experience that a teacher has. When we're looking at that particular allotment, we're looking at, we're looking at the schools that have been identified as being eligible to participate, and then the subject areas that have been identified to be eligible to participate. And I know that trustee Horton spoke to it not being in all of our schools, and that is a goal that we continue to work on to expand into all of our campuses. With this upcoming school year, it will have the opportunity to participate in even more campuses. So the percentage of economically disadvantaged now has dropped down to 35%, and that's bringing us up to 39 campuses. We've expanded because we keep talking about this special need that we have for our special education positions, those vacancies. So now any campus within the district that has one of the units, I call them units, the self-contained units, now we're bringing in the eligibility for all of those positions also to be eligible to participate in this program. So essentially, if any campus has that, now that group of teachers will be eligible. And we will continue to work to see how we can get all of our campuses and all of our teachers eligible. But when we started this process, we were true to what the state said, which was the focus at that time was to staff your hardest-to-fill positions at your hardest schools. That's how it started. And now, of course, it has expanded to other opportunities, and we will continue to try and increase that.
I also think that the MAP testing is going to help us be able to start some, and I know that's only in the elementary years, but that's going to help give us some guidelines to see those that are performing and improving as well, without having to have all the other matrices to make sure we're staying true to the, what is required to prove that it's legitimate, fair assessment.
I was just going to add that built into HB2 is a local optional teacher designation system grant where the state will provide some funding to help districts grow and expand their TIA systems, so that's something that the district could potentially take advantage of, too.
And I'd like to add, although I appreciate, sorry, Misty, I appreciate the teacher incentive allotment and the opportunity that that gives teachers, I don't, I don't understand it as being the sole option for increasing basic teacher pay. So I want us as a board to consider that our local, our local priority and our local budget can, can be used to mend that or to, I don't want us to just make the teacher incentive allotment the only option, or any legislative decisions moving forward, the only option for teacher pay to increase.
Unfortunately, I agree 100%. We do need to honor base salary and everything, be competitive and, and be fair on that, that pay.
I think we have that authority locally, so I don't want to pass that off to anyone.
But I will tell you legislatively, having talked with multiple education senators, that the problem is that they are putting money in buckets now. And one of the things that they, trustee May and I experienced was, they say, but they have the ability to make more money, I mean, they tell us that.
Oh, I don't disagree. That's actually my point, is that they control it more than we do. We control it here at a local level on an annual basis, and I talked to Ms. Garza about this at length last week, and I just suggested that, you know, I want it, when you talked about the every-other-year mentality of, okay, we'll have raises every other year, we just need as a board to consider, okay, what are, what is the tone going to be moving forward? Because this is our opportunity to, to change the way that, the increment that we increase teacher pay.
I like that. I agree. And also, and also on that every-other-year thing, since we're, it was just mentioned, the thing that's, I find, if I understood what I was reading and what you expressed, Ms. Garza, was that even though the second year of the biennium, there wouldn't be a pay increase because we front-loaded it. They are still funding that same amount. It's not like, okay, you only get this much and, but you don't get it next year, you know, you're still getting it for those two years. And these buckets now are protected.
That is correct.
This, this funding for teacher pay is protected, and they will fund it each year, and the raises will be accordingly every other year. And so I, that's huge to stop using teacher pay on any area, anyone's bottom line as a pawn in legislation or in lobbying or in whatever. It's, I am so thankful, that is one of the big changes that I am thankful for, seeing that, that bucket protected and separate.
And of course, the right.
Can I ask a question about that legislative bucket? I've had several teachers ask when they can expect to see that increase, you know, hit their bank accounts. When, when are we looking at? What's the timeline for that?
So our raises are always on the 9-1 check in a normal year.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so they'll see the 5,000 and the 20, well, spaced out over the year, but it'll start 9-1.
Correct.
Thank you.
First, I just want to say, this is very exciting, all of this. I know we're getting into the weeds on this, but top level, this is very exciting, and thank you also for the focus on special education. Those are really hard jobs, and so I'm really grateful that we're really focused on that, and hopefully that will help us to retain some of those really hard jobs as well. I just want to make sure that I understand the strategy to close the gap. That'll be next year that we're going to work on that?
Well, like I said, there will be no additional raise funding for next year, so the reason that we're, I'm recommending that we move to the every-other-year is because the HB2 requires us to front-load all of the teacher pay in '25, '26. So could we hold back some of the other monies and not do it? Yes, but we would be giving a very small raise, because I don't see a world where we would give a raise in '26, '27 to non-teaching staff and not to teachers. I mean, it just, it doesn't look good, and I, that's why, that's why the recommendation was, let's see what we can do this year with the understanding that next year, we'll maintain the raise, but then we'll provide a retention stipend with some fund balance.
Well, and that's because the money is already there to maintain the raise.
Correct. But there's no new money for an additional raise for '26, '27.
But the raise we give this year, so everybody's clear, is the same money is going to be there.
We will maintain it in '26, '27.
Right.
So no clear strategy to close the gap, then? Just want to make sure I understand that.
Well, close the gap between.
In the, with our market.
Yeah. Well, you know, like us, as with many other districts, we're dealing with the amount of money we got, so.
Yes, we have money.
I think everyone is going to do what they can to give the teachers as much as they can, and then, but we're all kind of moving at the same pace, so that, like Amy said, we'll have to kind of wait and see how the dust settles next year and then maybe going into the next biennium. If we see that gap continuing to increase, at that point, we can make some decisions.
I think I want to point out just to trustee May, that we, we have a pool of money as a local district that we, in the past, it's been my experience, the past two and a half years, we've had to make choices to spend that money in ways that we, as a board, agreed on. And my point earlier was that with closing that gap, we could choose to use some of those monies where we've been spending it on other things. Maybe we increase our spending on teacher pay to accelerate closing that gap, because that's a choice that we, as a board and as a district, we make. Yes, it might cut into the budget elsewhere, but we have, we have money that is, that we receive, and we can choose if we want to increase not just by these amounts, but in order to close a gap. So there is, there are ways, it's just has, it hasn't been our approach in the past.
But with all the changes, do we know what the gap will be in the upcoming years?
No, we won't know until everyone else adopts their pay plans, which is happening now and next month.
And like, we didn't know what, we didn't know now, or then what we know now, because other districts chose to continue to give raises where we, as a district, didn't. So they kept that movement forward or that acceleration, and we, we lost, like I said, momentum because we chose not to give a raise.
And if it helps to know, I'm working with several large Houston-area districts, and no one so far is giving any more than the 5,000 that they're forced to. And what you're calculating for your non-teachers is a greater increase than most of your peers are doing. And so I think you will bridge gaps in many areas that are cost-effective for the district and will be impactful in terms of market competitiveness and employee pay competitiveness.
I think also something to point out is, if I'm not mistaken, our, even our other benefits package is, which is a value, is more competitive.
For sure.
Than in other districts, so that, and there are other legislative changes that I'm not, I don't have all the details on yet and surveys that have been done, but there are other things that as a district that we can improve on that, that do equate to more money in the pocket of our employees and to the, the value that they're being shown versus just the paycheck. But the paycheck is important because that's also how they.
Correct. And a lot of times, that's overlooked as employees are kind of shopping around. They're hyper-focused on teacher pay. They may get where they're at, and their health plan is not great, or the district doesn't contribute as much to their health plan, and at the end of the day, they probably ended up with less money in their paycheck. So you're absolutely right. All of those ancillary benefits do matter in terms of the actual take-home pay for employees, so we have to keep that in mind as well.
They matter, but it depends on how it's, you're looking at it from a 20-year teacher. You're looking at your, you're starting to look at retirement years, so you're wanting to grow those last 15, 20 years.
Sure.
Top salary. So that, I want to help get them there, because I feel like the area of teaching is, is not, there's no incentive to stay in it long-term. You have to move into a different pay structure just to get that, that growth or that bump up. And if we could create that environment in the teacher area, we might keep better teachers.
I mean, I would argue this gets us a good way there. I mean, this is pretty attractive when you look at, you know, a 10-year teacher making almost 70 grand. So it's a step in the right direction. Does it get us all the way there or where people would want to be? Probably not, but.
On a market.
At least the legislature's recognizing it, and we'll see the next biennium kind of what their contribution is going to be to grow that teacher retention allotment. Will they grow it at this same pace again? I mean, that would be phenomenal if they would, but it'll just depend on what kind of funding the state has to put into it next biennium.
You were on.
Okay. All right, so proposed personnel changes, we shared a little bit about this at the April workshop. Primarily, the difference that you're going to see here is in our special education positions. We did put some more money into providing additional support positions for our special education area. 95 of our 142 proposed new positions are for special ed at a cost of $5.6 million. We're proposing total additions of just over $8 million for new staff. 13.5 of those are at the campus level at a cost of $656,500. I will remind you, at the campus level, that number looks low, but we're going budget-to-budget when we look at this, and last year, we budgeted enrollment of 74,000 students. when we look at this. And last year, we budgeted enrollment of 74,000 students when we built our budget. We're now budgeting 73,500. So, we're actually budgeting 5,000 less than last year at budget time. So, that's why the campus number looks a little low from what you would expect that number to be. Primarily, what we're seeing there is, you know, the opening of Campbell and Isler. We have to provide principals and a new administrative staff. Some of those moved from other campuses as a result of rezoning, but there are some positions that are just plain old adds because of the new campuses.
So, do you have a total of what that cost us by overestimating our enrollment? What did that cost us for last, for this last school year?
So, 1,000 ADA is about $9 million in funding.
So, we're going to owe that back?
No, we will not owe that back. I mean, we have, we have funding to support it by growth in our special programs, special education, so we-
Okay, good.
We are okay. And that's why we're being super conservative going into next year. And then even the year after that, you know, with education savings accounts coming, when we start to build our budget for '26, '27, we'll need to look at that and see, what kind of enrollment number do we want to use for the upcoming school year? Because-
I think what I'm pointing out, just so I understand and everyone understands, when we, when we give a projected enrollment number, when we report that, or we stand on that, we're funded based on that number. And so, money has to be shifted, you're saying, from other allotments?
Well, we're funded based on what the actual enrollment and actual student data is that we report to TEA. So, while we built our budget on 74,000 students, we also built our budget on a certain number of special ed kids and dyslexia kids and bilingual. And as those numbers continue to rise exponentially, if we don't meet our enrollment target for regular enrollment, it makes up the difference sometimes. So, we're-
Okay, but the budget is built on that, that number?
That is correct. That's why that enrollment number is so critical, right? Because it drives everything we do in terms of the expenditure budget.
You mentioned that we don't really know what ESAs are going to do. So, is that going to be kind of an unknown in the budget, where we expect student enrollment to go down?
It really will. And we'll have to, you know, decide going into '26, '27, do we want to be ultra-conservative on our enrollment number? Like, we may have a better feeling for it a year from now, kind of what the interest is. But we really won't know until, you know, it's time to enroll, and kids are, I guess, we just don't know, you know.
I also wanted to ask the question, and you might need to get back to me on this percentage, but what percentage of our employees are classroom teachers?
About 5,000 of our 10. Well, when you say classroom teachers, are you-
So, is that, so it's, we're right at 50%?
Yes.
So, we're 50% classroom teachers, and then the other 50% is everything else?
Correct.
So, is that a one-to-one ratio? I mean, for one-to-one? For every classroom teacher, we have another employee?
That includes all of our operations staff, our bus drivers, custodians, everything.
And that's a pretty standard statewide distribution. Generally, in any district, half of the employees are teachers.
For the last 10 years, that's been standard?
Forever, yep.
20 years?
Yeah.
So, also, on the new positions that I noticed on here, I noticed, is the Bluebonnet support, Assistant Director, Curriculum and Instruction Elementary Focus, and Reading Specialist, that were under Bluebonnet. Could you speak to that?
So, those are two positions that we put in place in our Teaching and Learning Department to help with the implementation of Bluebonnet.
Even though TEA offered us, we needed to add that?
I mean, someone from our school side might speak to that.
And I know you weren't here, Dr. Landry, so you're not aware, but I do know that we were offered, TEA offered us massive support. And actually, we had a, it was used as a liaison versus an implementation support. So, I wish we had taken more advantage of that and saved the taxpayers, because it was at free. I mean, free versus the actual increase. Okay, then what about on the other?
Dr. Winkler can speak to that?
So sorry, go ahead.
Microphone, sorry. We work with Michael Holland from Region 6, and he offered us one campus to support, and they chose Runyon. So, they'll be working with Runyon Elementary, and then go on to some other campuses to help. But we did take them up on that offer as well.
Okay, awesome. And so, just to make sure that they had offered, did we apply for the grant money for all the support that TEA was offering for Bluebonnet?
We didn't have to apply. They just gave it to us through Region 6.
Okay, so it was just for one personnel?
Which is for one campus. And then, they will go in and hopefully videotape and do three model classrooms at Runyon. And if there's any additional support, they'll offer us that through Region 6, and that would come through like a paraprofessional to help. But we did absolutely. We had about seven campuses apply for it.
Okay, excellent. And I'll actually follow up, too, to see if we can manage to squeeze out anymore.
Yeah, we're happy to take as much money as they want to give us.
So, I think what I'm hearing is that number may change. Are we going to stick to that? Were you saying that we accounted for an additional support staff at each campus?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was reading another line. Say that again.
Maybe I misunderstood your question. What was your question?
I just remember that, and check me if I'm wrong, trustee May, if you can recall, we've taken in a lot of stuff, and there's only so much space in the brain for things. But I remember when we were looking at Bluebonnet, we were eligible, we were being told and hearing that there were millions of dollars available for support on your, if we were to adopt it, in grant money, which was one of the reasons for trying to get in earlier, to get in front and get more of that grant money. And so, that's what I was referring to, is did we take advantage of that, which was our goal, so.
So, on this full-time employee by Reading Specialist in this chart, Reading Specialist 1, what is that, is that what you were addressing?
No, I was actually referring to the Assistant Director, Curriculum and Instruction Elementary Focus. It's a new Assistant Director position-
Okay, I misunderstood you. I'm sorry.
Assistant Director position under Bluebonnet support. And to me, we were already going to be implementing some sort of a new curriculum anyway. Were we going to add that position too? Or were we, I mean, we already have staff in place. That's number one.
Okay.
And number two, adding an Assistant Director, would we have had to have done that for a curriculum change anyway? And number three, Bluebonnet, adopting it, there was a lot of funding support that came with it if we applied for the grant. So, that's what I was asking about.
Thank you.
Okay, then the other one, under Admin Support, Purchasing Clark, New Campus Ordering and Support, what happened?
So, that position is primarily to help us support ordering for our new campuses. In '26, '27, or '27, we're going to have five new campuses come on board. Next year, we'll have three. So, we'll have a junior high, and, easy, correct me if I'm wrong, but just increase in volume in terms of ordering. All of the supplies and instructional materials for those campuses that need to be ordered, that all happens over the summer, and we have two people that do that right now. So, we're just kind of front-loading that in preparation for what we know is coming as we continue to open. And when I say campuses, big ones, high schools, junior highs. This year, we were fortunate, we had two elementaries, so we were able to keep up with the workload. But that's a paraprofessional position.
No, and I understand that, and we have to have the support for that. But once we add personnel in a district, it's rare that it goes away when our growth maybe levels off, or the school building levels off. So, I just didn't know if that was cost-effective to add that employee versus maybe temp help, or someone that could fill in or not have-
Sure. And we can, we can always look at that. You know, after those new campuses open in '27, and, like you said, if enrollment continues to flatten, there will be needs elsewhere. We could reallocate the position somewhere else if the need is no longer there. But that's what, primarily, that's designed for.
Is none of that ordering done at the school level? Is it done at the district level?
No. This is, this is to get the schools, like, equipped with all of the things they need.
Furniture.
Well, furniture is happening, is planning and construction. But this is every instructional material they need, all the beakers, all the things for the chemistry lab, all the instructional materials for the classroom, you know, to outfit the front office with laminators, all those little things that you think of, child nutrition supplies, custodial supplies.
Just so I'm clear, that's done at the district level?
Yes. That is all done at the district level.
That's because the schools aren't built yet.
Yes.
Correct. Right.
Thank you.
I don't think I let you get through, but I do have some other questions. I'll just wait till you finish.
Okay. All right. So, now moving to the expenditure side of the budget, as we start to kind of put this all together, our additional campus personnel and department personnel at a cost of $8 million. The employee raise scenario that we provided, 33.18 million. We are proposing to do an increase to our substitute pay, just to stay kind of in line with what surrounding districts are doing. And as a result of the increased teacher pay, 375,000, and a slight adjustment to summer school. This is the offset to our teacher incentive allotment. This is the expenditure side of the revenue line that you saw earlier. We talked at length about software costs. This is just, we're seeing increase in software costs across the district. This is to help kind of close that gap. And then other expenses, utilities, fuel, insurance, supplies for the campuses. And then TRS on behalf, this is the offset for that $4 million revenue number on the revenue slide. So, total estimated expenditure increase, budget-to-budget, just over $49 million.
Ms. Garza, could we go back to that last slide, under software costs? This is one of those things that I think always reminds me of, you sign up for subscriptions somewhere, and then, or memberships, and then you forget you have them, and they auto-renew, and you got, and there's not enough necessarily people using those to get your return on your investment. When was the last time we did an audit on those softwares?
So, Dr. Lambert actually has a system that is tracking all of the software usage in the district to determine the highest utilized one. And so, that is something that they have been very intentional about watching to make sure that we don't have software that's duplicating efforts. We're buying two different softwares that do the same thing. So, that is something that we are constantly looking at.
I know one that was mentioned to me, and I am not an expert on this by any such of the means, was turnitin.com versus NoRed Inc. They're totally different softwares, but they are a massive difference in expense. And are they being, which one was being used more? What do they do? So on and so forth. And I know that when I did the crunching of just what I had learned about it, it was like almost $250,000 difference. So-
So, that, yes, that is something we are constantly evaluating.
That's subsequent. I mean, that's substantial, not subsequent, substantial. So, anyway, that's why I'm asking that, when the last time we did that study and are evaluating it?
It's ongoing, yes.
Did you see Hayden mention that he's doing an inventory of apps, or are we going to do an audit of that? Okay.
That is correct. All right. So, now, putting this all together, if you look at our beginning revenue from last year's budget was at just over 700 million. Our $61 million increase in revenue puts our total revenue estimate at 761 million. And then our beginning expenditure budget was at 711.97, and those estimated expenditures at 49 puts us at 761 for expenditure. So, we do have a balanced budget projected into next year.
That's good news.
I do love that, that, and you know, because I was contacting you before this, I was like, okay, prepare me. What are we looking at? And then we got the report, and we're able to go through it. So, I do appreciate the work. I do want us to continue to what trustee Duncan was saying, and what I know trustee Dawson has said numerous times, of continuing to evaluate where we're spending money for the greatest educational return on our investments, so that we can choose to spend money in more strategic and targeted places. We, I have been learning, we are good at being lean in some areas. I just want to make sure that we're doing the fiduciary thing and efficiently looking at these different areas for the return on the educational outcomes more, so that we know we are doing that.
Right. All right.
Speaking to that, when we return in July, will we see an estimate of what it would cost if we did increase the pay for teachers locally that had the five-plus years? Will that be brought forward in July?
Well, that, if we're going to bring the pay plan for your approval at the July board meeting, that is probably something we need to kind of work through before that day, so that we have a recommendation that you all will support at that meeting, because otherwise, we're going to have to delay to the next meeting. And then that puts us behind-
On pay.
-in getting the actual pay increase implemented, so-
That's the last thing we want to create. So, yes, we do need to work on that.
So, trustee Horton, in alignment with what you're just asking, I know you've been traveling since the board book went out, and I'm not sure if you even got it. But I did want you to know that there's a projected pay scale that they've given us in the board book. But if we want to make changes to that, we need to have those communications with Dr. Landry and Dr. and Ms. Garza in between.
That's what I'm asking. I did, I did see the pay scale, the projected scale, and that's where my questions stem from about the local versus state funding. And I was just wondering if that was something that we would be looking into before July, since we did have quite a bit of discussion today about it.
And that, my answer would be, we definitely need to have that taken care of before July. We don't want any delay. The other option is that we can, not that, I'm always a much bigger proponent of pay increase over stipends, or retentions, or whatever you want to call them, bonuses, whatever. But we could also look at what that could mean in the spring as going forward as well, if we don't want to hold up pay for this, for this year. So, we can, we can look at all those options as a, as a board and talk with the experts in the area as to what that would cost and how that would affect us rippling, before the July meeting.
So, in looking at the schedule, what would be your recommendation in terms of prioritizing? Like, what years of experience would you like us to look at? Like, 15 and beyond, or?
I just think, you know, the state is giving that money, and then we're contributing basically 2,700 to new teachers, when I guess our three to four are getting, you know, that plus the 25. Is there, just kind of looking at what other districts have done, because we haven't, like we said, given the raises as other districts have, how would it look if we got caught up in that regard to other districts that have been giving raises?
Yeah, I think we'll just need to look at it. It'll require us to look at it. I think-
I mean, if we're going to make an adjustment here, we'll need to take it from somewhere else in the compensation plan. So, just keep that in mind as well.
All right.
I do have questions on other ones, but I wanted us to finish, and I'll go back.
Sure, okay. So, this is just our budget by major category. Payroll makes up 89.3% of our expenditures. Contracted services, the largest item in there, is our utility bill. President Onwell, you had mentioned that, you know, looking at other places where we could trim. A lot of these categories beyond payroll are fixed costs, that we have not a lot of control over. Now, we will try to do our best to look at where we can trim, but it, when you take out those big-ticket items, there's not a lot of room in there that's going to move the needle.
We're not going to be able to make much change in equipment and other, I'm guessing, because that's-
That's property insurance.
Yes. And then, although we did get some help there, it's still, I mean, we still have the fixed amount. Supplies and materials is the only-
Fuel. Fuel for the buses is the biggest item in there.
Is that what's under supplies and materials?
That is what's in there, yes. And in terms of property insurance, when you say we got help, what?
Under, I thought they did some, that, I'd have to go back.
There is a, there is a bill that passed, but it's only for counties that are along the coast. So, we did not, we did not qualify for any of that assistance.
I thought they gave us like, something like another $7 million based on our student population.
Oh, yes, the allotment for basic costs. That is to help with some of the increases that we have seen since 2019.
In insurance and so forth?
Not necessarily that we're adding that to the budget.
No.
Because Senator Crichton said that several times in the Senate Finance Committee hearings, that while they're directing a lot of this funding to specific things, it's for things we're already spending it on, which now we have funding to support it, which frees up other dollars-
Somewhere else.
-to do raises or do other things, so.
Going back to that, Ms. Garza, because when we spoke, I wrote a note here, that there was a $7.5 million amount, dollar amount going forward. Is that what you're talking about?
That is that allotment for basic costs to help us with the increases that we've seen in the areas that were listed there.
So, that's our, that's our increase in our bucket, and that's new money?
Just things that we've already been paying, increases we've seen.
It may have contributed to our deficiency, but now-
Inflationary things that they're now giving us $7.5 million to kind of help offset.
And that's the kind of thing, I guess, I'm looking at, just from a high-level view, is we do have more money coming in. So, it's about how we're spending it. Because, yes, we have been spending, but there is more coming in now than last year.
So, under the allotment for basic costs of the 106 times our enrolled students, which equates to about 7.7 million-
Correct.
...dollars, to help with those other expenses. So, that brought, we were already spending it, but that's 7.7 million to help us recoup some of that increase in the expense. So, I guess the question is, is then, where is that being reallocated to? Is that part of the 20- Is that part of the 20, 500?
That's part of what you're seeing on the expenditure budget increase.
Does this also include the 29.4 payment we received?
That's, that's in our, that's in our bank account.
So that got put into the account?
That's in savings, that's not recurring revenue, that's just.
That's right.
But that's, that's in our account?
It's in our fund balance, yes. Or it will be in our fund balance at the end of the year.
We're putting it in savings, so to speak, but it's there.
Correct. So yeah, to stick to your point about where is the other $7.5 going? It's to support additional personnel and raises primarily. If you look at the two biggest numbers on there, so 22 million of that $33 million in raises is being supported by those two allotments. And so the rest of it is coming from other additional funding that we're receiving from those other categories.
Thank you.
All right, so now looking at our fund balance, our proposed budget for next year, $761 million. Our, our stated goal is to have 20% of that in our savings account or in our fund balance. So that would put our target at $152.2 million. We are projecting to end '24, '25 with $173 million in our fund balance. So we're at 22.7%. This 173 does already take into account a potential transfer to our self-funded insurance policy or plan for the current year. But keep in mind, $3.5 million of that, we will need next year to transfer to our self-funded insurance plan that was part of the plan design changes that were adopted. So looking to '26, '27, if we wanted to do a retention stipend, here's a few scenarios that we could use some of that money for going into '26, '27, if we're unable to provide a raise that year.
I do have a question. The 20% is something that has to remain there. Well, realistically, we need it there.
We do need it there, yes.
So of that 173, and not knowing how the bond debt fund is going to be affected with our tax rate, do we have any way to project how much we should allot for that to protect, I mean, to, in addition to that 152?
Are you talking about our debt service?
Yes, the debt service that changed. I know we don't have the numbers and the understanding clearly on it all right now and we won't for a year, but we don't want to spend now overspend and not be prepared for that. So I'm just, how do, how do we try to?
Well, this is fund balance for our maintenance and operations fund. This is completely separate from the debt service fund.
Okay, so it wouldn't affect that, we can't use, I wasn't even thinking, you're right.
This is different pot of money. So if, if we have capacity of 20.8 million right now and we decide to use, let's say, 10 of it for a retention stipend in '26, '27, and then we need 3.5 for the health plan, we're using up 13.5 of that. And then keep in mind, as we move into '26, '27, if we add additional personnel because we're opening new campuses, our budget is increasing. So we're, we're chasing a larger 20%, 20% of a larger number, so we need to.
But if our budget is increasing, that means we have more students, so our funding's increasing.
Right, but our fund balance target then grows, right? So if our budget grows to 770 million, 20% of a larger number, we would have to have more in our savings account.
Right. I do want to make a point, it seems like, and I've, I've worked two and a half years to figure this out, Ms. Garza, there's always a $30 million number I'm chasing. And, and sometimes we break it in half, like an 18 and a 10, or there's an 18 million here. And, and I'm just trying to understand, and you're helping me, but I, I do know that there is money that we, we're floating around. I just, I'm trying to really grasp, okay, what, what would be the benefit and what would be the con, so to speak, of, of using that to do what we were discussing earlier and help close that gap in teacher pay?
That money that's in fund balance, if we were going to spend it down, it would have to be for one time things, so.
And that's why you always recommend a stipend, and I get that.
Because we can't use, we can't use fund balance to provide a raise because it's.
But we're putting that, we're, we're keeping that fund balance using the money that's in our, like I tell my children, my spending. So the, the amount we can spend, we are deciding or determining, okay, how much of that are we going to keep applying to the fund balance, right?
Right, we just want to have a certain amount in our savings account, like, like you would in your personal finances, right? You'd like to have three months' worth of expenditures in your savings account in the event something happens. That's same concept here.
And, and, right, we live by that. So it's just how are we spending, to get to that point, what are we spending up to that point and how?
My last question is, this year, well, it's not my last question, but in this, on this slide, the shortfall that we are making up for last year, and we, we've already spoken regarding that ad nauseam, but a lot. And then the $3.5 million that we need to take for next year's benefits that we were already approved for the benefits plan. I know this year was an anomaly, but we also probably should, there's a lot of medical stuff going on these days. I also don't want us to do, I want us to do the maximum we can to reward and, you know, retain employees. But I also want to make sure we leave enough cushion to get us through this next year if we have a shortfall on insurance again.
Absolutely. So if we have to go beyond that 3.5, that, that comes out of this 20.8 as well, so.
So I feel like we need a little bit of cushion there. We can't just say.
I agree.
You know, I just want us to make sure that we take, just proactively, because that 20% is the 152, too. We can't, that's, I mean, that has to remain.
It does.
And so I want us to be sure we allow, if it's, even if it's, I know that, I don't want to throw $3 million around like a manhole cover, but even if it's the $3 million that we go, okay, well, we, or whatever, it was 7.5 this year, wasn't it? What was the, our shortfall on our insurance that we, on our self-funding?
We're currently at 8.5 right now.
See, that's, that's concerning for next year. And again, this was an anomaly, but that doesn't mean we won't see an anomaly next year. And I don't want us to be caught.
Right, but I mean, we've made plan design changes to kind of close the gap on that 8.5, knowing that we will probably need 3.5 to get us all the way there. And it could grow from that point as well, but.
And those plan design changes typically take a toll on what the employee pays?
Yes, that premium increases.
That's what I'm trying to avoid.
Yeah.
Well, I'm trying to avoid their, them paying what they're getting in a, in a raise.
Correct.
To insurance.
All right, so what's next? We will continue over the summer to finalize our state funding projections. Certified values will be here at the end of July. So we'll go through that local property value study to finalize our tax rate calculations for next year. I plan to give an update at the district level planning and decision-making committee meeting on the 9th of July. And then we'll come back at the July 15th board meeting and give you an update if you so wish. And then August 5th is our first public hearing to discuss the budget and the tax rate. And then at the August 19th meeting, we will have another public hearing to discuss the budget and tax rate and then hopefully adopt the budget and tax rate at that meeting.
Just real quickly, I want to point out to the trustees, I know I don't need to remind you all of this, but the, the way that the agenda and the board book works and the public, we need to make sure that any discussion we have regarding pay, any communication you want to have with Dr. Landry and Ms. Garza, the office, the district office is closed for July 4th on Friday, which it would have been already. So real, and then that means that our board book and our agenda and so forth have to be completed and all discussion done and finalized before July 10th, even with that short week in July, the first week of July, because the offices are closed the 11th and 12th and we have to have everything posted by the 10th. So I just, just planning wise, I wanted to give you all a heads up because I know that's not something you all have to always work with. But for me and for Dr. Landry and Ms. Garza, that any discussions that you want considered that have to be finalized and available to be distributed to the trustees by July 8th, reality-wise.
Well, that's when they're distributed, but yes, that does give us a short timeline. So thank you for pointing that out, but.
I just want, I just wanted to give everyone a heads up.
Yes, thank you. That has been noted. Ms. Garza, I just want to say thank you again. And to your team, normally your team doesn't sit in the front row, so it's good to see them all. Thank you for all of your hard work. This is really good news today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did, I did have one more question on the pay structure. A year ago, it may have been a little more than a year ago now, when did we do the pay increase with the police department where we had to do a substantial, well, I say substantial to me?
Fall of '23.
Okay, so I just was wanting to, because that was to bring us up competitively speaking, and I'm just curious where we are at this point.
We are in a good place, although Chief Blakelock has informed me that the county and the city are looking at overhauling their pay plans as well. So we, we could be in a potential spot again where we're playing catch-up, but we won't know that until.
Well, they're doing an audit, right?
Until they finalize what they're doing with their pay plans, but.
Or study. Is that what you're referring to?
But we're recommending 4% increase for those officers now. Depending on what the county and the city does, we, we may need to start looking at that again, too. Because his, chief has made great strides in hiring people, keeping people, and hopefully we can stay competitive.
And I, and I, I mean, I, I'm so thankful for them and safety and security are utmost concern. But I know when we had that last legislative session that made us have to make changes for staffing on the campuses, everyone was chasing the same pool of people, which basically like teachers. And I want us to stay competitive, but I also, it's like, holy cow, here's another one. So we never get out in front of any of these, it feels like, even though we're trying.
So speaking to that point, I saw that we got a safety, the safety allotment was $33,500. Is that an, is that increased from last year or is that additional?
Yes, that's a, that's an increase.
Of 33,500?
Well, it was 10 prior to that.
So we went from 10 to, so we got 23.5 thousand per campus.
So that again is, is supporting efforts that we have made to increase staff in our police department. One of those allotments where we were provided additional money for stuff we were already spending, yes.
I just want to point that out because I did catch that, even though I didn't go back to it.
So it was 33,540 per campus plus it was a 20 times our ADA, times the 73,500. So it's 1.47 million plus the 33,540 plus of, per campus. Because that was one of the things I was looking at especially.
So we've gotten a substantial increase in that area.
Which is good, but it, again, there were other areas that, like just going back to our safety and security on our, our cameras, our film on windows, our swiping of tags on doors, all of those entry points, all of those things that, and fences that get blown down from storms that aren't covered by entrance, all of those are there. But I'm so thankful for that, that increase there. So that'll help offset it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Are we interested in taking a quick break before we do HB3 stuff? Okay, the time is 11:37 and we will stand in adjournment for 10 minutes. All right. Time is 11:49 and the board is back in session. Moving on to our HB3 goals. Discussion of House Bill 3 implementation, early childhood and college career military readiness. Board adopted goals. And we have an esteemed panel before us. Dr. Taylor, are you starting?
Okay, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Landry. We are here to present House Bill 3 goals today. With me at the table is Lauren Helfer, the Coordinator of Accountability and Data, and Tally Stout, the Director of CTE. What you will see today is a collaborative effort of information that we have put together and I will talk to you about that in just a minute. But present in the audience with us today are also staff members who have worked to help us make sure we're looking at the goals and how to measure these goals effectively. With us is Laura Willard with Advance Academics, Jamal Willis, CCMR Specialist, Brittany Coaster, Elementary Math Coordinator, way so when I call your names, Karen Kreschman, the English Language Arts Specialist, Amy Wilson, Early Childhood Specialist. And absent will be Hartwell Brown, Melinda Stewart, Dr. Upshaw and Darren Carlisle, who also helped lead this work. Somebody told them they could take a vacation. And helping to support the implementation of the work, as we talked about and we'll talk about more today, is Dr. Winkler and Dr. Povich. So this is certainly a team effort. Under House Bill 3, school boards are required to adopt these goals. There will be one goal in early childhood literacy that is aligned to third grade math, one that is aligned to third grade star, third grade reading, and one that is aligned to CCMR, which is graduates that meet readiness requirements. And you'll hear more about that today. To talk through the timeline that you see on the board today, we started this work back in April. And when I say we started this work, we started looking at the last five years of our House Bill 3 goals and how we could adjust those goals. Once we got our preliminary star data in, we started to set our baseline goals. And then on June 10th, we met with the Student Achievement Board Subcommittee, which is, was Mrs. Odenweller, Mrs. May and Mrs. Dawson. We had a very rich conversation during that meeting. It was important to bring all other stakeholders into the conversation. We then sent a draft of our full plan that you have in front of you today to Dr. Landry, who shared with the other trustees, in addition to the feedback that we received from the Teaching and Learning Departments and our Assistant Superintendents of Schools. So in this workshop, we are discussing these proposed goals today and our plan is to bring them to the full board at the July 15th meeting for adoption. What you will see on this slide really is just history from House Bill 3. This originated in 2019. And as you, as we go through our presentation today, there were only slight changes made to the subgroups. And we'll talk about that in just a minute. So House Bill 3, the board is required to adopt this plan. And this plan will include annual goals for students in each group evaluated under the closing the gaps domain. And then we'll talk about that in a minute because there has been some changes to that. Annual goals for aggregate student growth in third grade reading, third grade math, and CCMR, which is our college career military readiness. And assign district administrator to coordinate the implementation of the plan, which will be me. And then we are also required to provide an annual review of our House Bill 3 goals at a public meeting, which will happen around December, between December and February when we report the annual report.
So since 2019, there were some changes with the accountability refresh in 2023 that changed the groups that are reported in closing the gaps. So since the House Bill 3 requirements are that we report and set goals for all of the groups in closing the gaps, we do have some new groups that we will be setting goals for this time that were not in the original, when we set the original set of goals five years ago. Those groups are high focus, highly mobile, foster, homeless, migrant and emergent, excuse me, emergent bilingual current. The state also changed the minimum group size requirement for closing the gaps from 25 to 10. So in some of, some of the groups we might not have set goals for before because they had somewhere between 10 and 25, we will set a goal for any group that has at least 10 students in it at that level now. So with those changes to closing the gaps in the '23 refresh, we used to, when we would provide information to the board on this report, all the data sources used to be publicly available, either through the taper or through what's called the Texas Research Portal. Some of these groups that were being asked to set goals on and will need to report for you are not, their data is not available in any of those public formats. So some data now will come from a confidential data source that we will, you know, mask and make compliant to share with the public. That's just an FYI. That's just an FYI, because it used to be we would be able to say, like, oh, you can go look at all of this data yourself here. There will be some pieces of data that we won't be able to do that for, because it will come from a confidential internal source.
Just to be clear, by confidential, you're saying it's confidential because of law?
They, before we mask it and make it compliant to share with the public, it wouldn't, it would be data that would be with like individual student information, so we wouldn't be able to share it until we had created it in a way to share it publicly so that it is masked for FERPA.
But it's protected by law, when you say confidential?
Yes, yes. So we, we get it ready, we get it FERPA compliant, and then we can release it.
Thank you, I was just clarifying that, thank you.
See, we used to be able to share all the underlying data sources and just say, here it is, you can go look at everything that we use to pull this data. Now we'll say, here it is, but we won't necessarily be able to provide all of the underlying data set, because some of that data would not be FERPA compliant. But we will make the part we provide to the board and the public FERPA compliant. So in doing this, we talked with TEA, because so many things with the Closing the Gaps had changed, I wanted to check with them and make sure that we were on the right path, and that their recommendation was to have a stable five-year system, and that we should do our best to create goals and progress measures that will not need to be altered during the five-year period. It's important that we choose progress measures that will directly impact our ability to meet the board goals, and it's a best practice to choose no more than three progress measures for any adopted board goal. So in our recommendations and information today, we've also followed the recommendations from TEA.
Real quickly, going back to just what you just said on the last slide about you'll make FERPA compliant for the public or for the board, but if the board actually wanted to see or dig deeper, it didn't have to be compliant FERPA, we just can't release it, the information, because we're, we're able to see that, I mean, I'm only speaking because I know I have a couple of data gurus that will want to really dive in and see, and if there's something else they wanted to see, as long as it's not released, I mean, it's, we have to comply with FERPA as well, they could look at that material, correct?
I don't know the answer to that, I'm sorry.
You're correct.
Thank you, I just, I just, I just wanted that known, so I was wanting someone just to confirm that, thank you.
One thing to add, though, the smaller data sets that Mrs. Helfer is referring to oftentimes contain student names, student disability information, and once that is shared with the board, it is public. So that piece of data will not be shared in that format. Like, if we're looking at that small subset, and we're just looking at the actual data, how these students perform, absolutely, but the raw data with kids' individual information that's under FERPA, that's what Ms. Helfer is saying, we won't share that part, we will-
Actually, it is still, I mean, trustees can still see it, it doesn't then become public information, like, that has to be turned over, because that is something that is still protected by law. So the, the point that I was getting at is, unless there's something I'm not understanding, like, we're not communicating on the same wavelength here, if, just because you give it to a trustee doesn't mean that it's automatically public information for disclosure. It, it is still, the Attorney General would still say, that is not, it's not responsive if someone was to do a PIR and ask questions, that is still protected material, they cannot release, we, as a district, are under no obligation to release something that was sent to one of us that is, has student-specific information in it, it is protected still.
Yeah, I'm just referring to information that goes out to the entire board. Like, throughout this process, it was really important after we met with the Subcommittee that all seven board members had the information. So that information is the information that I'm referring to, because as we make these decisions, we need seven people on board. So when we update the data and send out the information for all board members, that's the piece of data that I was referring to.
Okay.
So what we have here is our historical data from the last round of the House Bill 3 goal setting. So these were the goals that were set in 2021 for the early childhood literacy information. You can see their yearly target goals, and then the STAR results below that. The 2025 number here is estimated based on our preliminary data set that we have that's come in so far. So I'll just give you all a minute to look at that. Oh, yes, let me mention that when we're talking about these goals for third grade math and RLA, the goal is set for students at meets grade level or higher, which is the approaches is the, the lower, the passing standard, meets is the, the next one, and then we have the highest one, which is masters. The goals for third grade will be based on the meets grade level score. Here is the historical information for the math, third grade, meets grade level goals. And here is the information on the historical CCMR goals. One thing to know, whenever you're looking at CCMR-related information, is that it is lagging data. So like, where you see 2025, that is accountability year 2025, so that is actually the data from the class of 2024.
Going back, I'm sorry, to the historical data, because there's a, there is a percentage associated with the year 25, and I think I'm reading this right, but are we, for 2025 in the first table, 56%, is that the goal for reading, third grade reading?
So that was the goal that was set during the first five years, they were, their goal was to move from 52% in 2021 to 56% in 2025. Their score in 2025, based on our preliminary data, looks like it will be a 59%.
So for 2021, 52% was the goal, just on-
52 was their baseline-
Okay.
-of, of information at that time. So it, yes, it was their goal at that time.
Okay, thank you.
Do you all have any other questions about the historical data? Okay, so now we will move into the information for our next set of five-year data. Oh, wait, almost. So the next thing we have is what is called, is basically the board calendar for reporting on this information to y'all throughout the school year. So this is what we are proposing for each of the different, basically, pieces of information that you would receive throughout the school year. These dates are based on the testing windows and when that data, the window is closed, and we're able to get all that data processed and into the format to, to send to you. So we have, you know, looking at here, you can see the different times when we are proposing to give you that information. Do you all have any questions about the calendar?
I have one question, more historical. When did you report these goals to the board, progress measure, in the previous HB3 cycle?
So similar time periods, because beginning of year testing, and middle of year testing, and end of year testing is sort of locked into those specific time periods of the school year. I, I believe that all the pieces are approximately the same time as they were before. Our annual report, there have been some years that we did it in January. More recently, though, the state's timing of the release of that data has come in a time that it makes more sense to do it in February.
Thank you.
So now, looking at the actual information, some of the numbers are, are small because of the number of student groups that the state has for Closing the Gaps now, but we, I did make the, the font much bigger for the overall goal information. These are the goals that were proposed when we worked with the Subcommittee. So I'll give you all a minute just to look at those, excuse me, and see if you all have any questions.
So the Subcommittee, just so I'm clear, that was Odenweller?
May and Dawson.
Okay. Do you all have any comments on these that you all want to share?
I do, I'm, I am so thankful to have worked with you all during that timeframe. I'd like to point out to the trustees that, as you already acknowledged, Trustee Duncan, that at 2021, on the, the slide back where you were commenting, was 52, and by 2025, the goal was four percentage point. I want to tell you that we really, I, we really pushed. The, the Subcommittee really tried to make them reach, and, and we had a big discussion about, we don't want to set people up to quote "fail," but we, we want you to, you know, really have a high reach. And they were very accommodating and thoughtful, and talked with us, and communicated, and Dr. Landry was having heartburn, and he goes, hey, look, we're in, we're going to do the best we can, we're going to shoot for that number, but, you know, it will land where we land. And so I do want to say that, if you'll notice here, the equivalent from 52 on, on the slide before, as I lick my finger, sorry, from 52 to the 56, look at where we're shooting for, from 59 to 67. So I know that's a lot to ask, I, I, we recognize that. And, and I, while I have faith in it, I, I also recognize that we possibly won't achieve it, but if we don't set goals high, then, then we're not really shooting for much.
I, I think something also that was helpful was to give an estimate of how many students is one point.
That's a good point.
If you all want to say it.
Oh, yes, so, one point, which would be, you know, 1% of our typical grade size for, like, our group of third graders would be about 55 children, because we tend to have about 5,500 per grade level.
Under HB3, what happens if we don't achieve these goals?
These are your goals as a board, and ultimately, I think that is your decision as a school board.
Okay, so this is more of an internal decision on, okay.
Yes, like, there are no consequences from TEA, if that's what you mean.
Just because we pushed hard, and if we don't make it, we're not going to be financially, you know, hit with a penalty, or, yeah, yeah. That was a big concern, when we, we were trying to make sure we understood when we were pushing for it in the Subcommittee.
And the only, sorry, the only obligation here is that, sorry, Dr. Landry, to put you on the spot, these are tied to the Superintendent's evaluation. And so, thank you for, for saying out loud, Mrs. Odenweller, about the, the goals feeling lofty, because that was some feedback we got from our team, and that was really based on the fact that nobody wants to disappoint. Like, we want to put numbers on paper that we feel are achievable for our students and our staff, and so we've had lots of conversation about the goals itself, themselves, and not the progress measures, but the goals. And, and we know that you want to reach high as a board, but we also want to make sure that we're able to implement the work. And so, thank you for saying that out loud to our teams, and especially those behind me and those watching today, because they want to make sure that we can reach these goals.
And that goes back to my question about the 2021 52% and how we got there, I guess that's, you know, his, his history, so we won't necessarily dwell on it, but I know this has also been a hot-button topic for us as a nation, I mean, overall, is our numbers. How did we get to a point where only 52% are proficient in any grade, is my initial question, but I'm glad that the conversations have been had, and, and we do see increases up to 2025, and I think, although lofty, maybe, these numbers that are proposed in the draft goals, I, I think are doable. I know they're much higher than maybe four or five years ago, but, and this is a, a new approach since 2019, but I do, I do, I do see these as being attainable, so thank you for the work you all did on the Subcommittee and the conversations that you had.
And, and reference to people feeling successful and wanting to please, and, and evaluations and so forth, to all those listening and concerned, we, we, while we set lofty goals, we also can evaluate things in, on the backside, and be fair and just with that, too, so.
Thank you.
So here is our next set of goals, which are the ones for third grade math, to increase from our current baseline, based on the preliminary STAR data of 57% to reach 65% in 2030.
I think, I think that one's a bigger reach, even though the, because of the fact, as we discussed in the Subcommittee, our curriculum situation in mathematics, I did, especially even going forward from there, I gave it even more thought, how that is a loftier goal. Our, we've kind of set ourselves up for success with the Bluebonnet for the reading, but we don't have anything in place yet for math, so I do recognize that as well.
And I just, I just want to make a comment, too, that while these goals are lofty, I mean, you cannot focus on everything, right? Can't have everything be a priority, and I think what the board is saying is that these are, this is a priority, and so we'll strategically align everything in that direction, so, and, and put as, as much behind that as we possibly can. So that's the thought process here is, yes, it is, they are robust goals, but we, we are saying we support you in those goals, and we support putting the efforts and the allocations and the resources behind them, so, and, and we're grateful for, you know, these goals.
Well, and I'll just go back right quick, go back to the reading goal.
Sure.
One of the things we discussed at the Subcommittee was the Bluebonnet curriculum, which is why we decided to roll out 1% each year from the baseline data up until 2028. And President Odenweller, you had a question earlier about the addition to the Bluebonnet staff during the budget presentation, the Assistant Director and the Specialist. Like, there is lots of, of factors that go into that curriculum, as we all know, and I think, you know, thank you, Trustee May, with the support that we need, we need that support to make sure that we are successful. So those two pieces do tie together, those additions and the work that we have to do moving forward.
Back to your comment, Trustee Odenweller, about the math outcomes and these being slightly different because we don't have anything in place, are you referring to the curriculum, the current math curriculum?
Did you want to refer to that? Okay. We had a whole discussion on that, our, our math scores, our, our successes are not where we feel like they could be with more robust, stronger math curriculum, and that we're looking at options and so on and so forth, but that's, yes, curriculum is an issue in math, just like it was reading.
Can someone elaborate on the curriculum that we're currently using for math in third grade?
Here we go.
Oh, and just to be clear, who is, we are, is there a committee for this?
That was what we, the people that talked with, the Subcommittee that talked with them regarding the HB3 goals, Trustee Dawson, May, and myself. And that's where this discussion happened, before they could bring it to the board as a whole.
So this is the Curriculum Subcommittee?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Brittany Kestner, Elementary Math Coordinator. We do have an adopted curriculum right now, it's, we use SAVIS and VISION is what we have in our adoption in Connor ISD. We adopted that when the TECS changed in 2012, so we've had it for quite some time. We're in what's called a gap year right now, and so we've purchased it because we thought the TECS were going to be revised, and TEA has since said they haven't. So we are looking at the HQIM list, hopefully by this fall, I would think, is kind of when that process would start. But there were some approved resources on the HQIM list for implementation this year, just like with reading, but that list is being evaluated right now as well, so there's some other products on the market. I believe Dr. Upshaw sent out kind of a summary of that to those on the Subcommittee, so that we can share that information if needed, but there is, yes, ma'am.
Yes, I would, I, I think that's the missing piece, is that maybe the members that, that weren't on the Subcommittee didn't see that information, so if we could get that shared with the entire board, that'd be great.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
I'm sorry, I didn't even know you all didn't get that whole, that everyone, I apologize on that, because-
I'll double check, but I don't recall.
No, that, that explains why you're asking both those questions, because when it got sent out, I didn't know Dr. Upshaw didn't send it to everyone, I apologize.
Yeah, Dr. Upshaw, I can follow up with her and have her send that to Dr. Landry, so that he can share that with everybody on the board.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
In actuality, I can forward that to you, Dr. Landry, and if you want to share that with everyone, since Dr. Upshaw is on vacation, that way she, I mean, it's the information she's presented to us, so.
Sure, I'd be happy to.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Um, yeah, we are, there, there is a plan, uh, to, to review, uh, math resources. And that's why you see there's a little bit of a lag with the math as opposed to the English, because it's about a year behind. But once we get, uh, some solid resources in place, then you can see that we, we have stepped up those goals as they go forward, you know, a little bit of an inflammation, implementation time, and then, and then we get rolling.
Fantastic.
Yep.
And then we have our, um, CCMR Board Outcome Goals, and Tally will talk to you a little bit more about those.
So in front of you, you have a methodology, um, component chart. This is what we use. It's a district developed, so I want you to know that. We, we first want to remind ourselves when we look at our board goal for CCMR, these are annual graduates. So we're going to do this super fast here. These are annual graduates, that means any student that enrolls in our, on our district within the year of graduation, they are counted. So it's, it's a different kind of subset for us. These are also lagging data, so when you look at our baseline here for 2025, that's the graduating class of 24, and then 2026 is our graduating class of 25. So I can say we are in line to meet both of those targeted goals. When you look at your methodology sheet, you'll notice there's indicators for college readiness. Uh, these cover SAT, ACT, all the wonderful things we offer in CISD. Uh, we have career readiness on the back. Um, as you notice, we've actually changed and morphed over the last five years. We're kind of in an indicator for just a little while in career ready here that we'll get to hone in on. And then you'll see special education and military ready. A military ready, I'd like to point out, this will be the first year that we don't actually have to seek out the DD4 forms. They will come through the actual process of the military. And those, I do believe this will increase, as it's, um, Dr. Landry spoke in our committee. This is a really hard one to hone in on. Uh, we will continue keeping these on file, just because it's just good practice for us. So that's kind of our CCMR criteria. Um, our goal is to move from 76 to 88. I'm kind of a goal digger, so that's an A. That's what we want our district. Dr. Landry's looking at me and Dr. Povich, I can kind of fill him back here. Uh, that, that is lofty, but what I will say is, is when we set CCMR goals, we set the whole child in mind. Our goal is, is when they leave us, is that they are a student that can go directly into our community and make a difference. So whether they're college ready, they're career ready, they're going into the military, we want a child that's life ready. And so that's where our goal is in mind. So, thank you all.
So now, excuse me, um, we are moving on into the progress measures portion. So we have our three large goals, which we just reviewed with y'all. And then the progress measures are components that are supposed to help us get in line with achieving those goals over time. So we have our, um, progress measures for early literacy and early math are very similar to each other. For pre-K, we are proposing to use, um, the phonological awareness on the circle literacy, uh, assessment and the math progress monitoring portion of circle. That's a test that we've already been giving, um, here in Conroe ISD. And then for our kender through third graders, we will begin using the NWEA MAP, um, results as a progress measure towards, um, reaching that third grade goal. For CCMR, I'll let Tally reference those.
So when we evaluated our strategies, one of the biggest things is we wanted to make sure we came from that, that whole child approach. So the TSI criteria follows in that college readiness, which means they're, they're ready to go into college with all the tools they need. So we'll look at that for both math and RLA. We also are going to look at the percentage of students who earn an industry-based certification. And we're actually adding on to this, it's in our progress measures draft here, that we're going to also include completers, because that is the new strategy for 2025 and beyond. And then, uh, we also have economically disadvantaged graduates who meet CCMR. And so while we know CCMR, we'll get, look at a new change in 2028, we still believe these create that whole CCMR student.
So this next portion is not in the presentation that you received from Dr. Landry. If you recall, President Odenmuller, when we started talking about the closing the gap subgroup during our subcommittee meeting, you entrusted us to set these goals for the progress measures. So you will not have seen this in your previous, uh, information that you received from Dr. Landry. And these will still have some adjustments made to them, because a part of what happens in K through three will not be established until our first nine-week assessment from MAP. So just so the board is aware, this is new information.
It is in the printed packet that you received today, though. That way you can see it up close if you need a easier view of it. So basically, these goals are set very similarly to how the goal, uh, the overall goal is. For these progress measures, we have our, uh, this is for our, um, early childhood literacy for our pre-K students, moving from 81% to 86% um, on target for that, uh, phonological awareness element of the circle test. Uh, very similar information here for the progress measure for pre-K for math. Again, moving from a 92% to a 95%. We haven't jumped up as much in this, you'll notice we stay the same some years. Once we reach over 95%, some of times the data can become statistically not as significant. So once we reach 95%, our goal would to be to maintain 95% or higher over time. And then this next one, it looks a little bit blank. As Dr. Taylor mentioned, uh, we have not taken the NWEA MAP assessments yet, so we do not have our full baseline data yet. So for our baseline here, we have based that on the national norms, which is 50%. So I will explain a little bit extra about how that 50% works, because that sounds, at first glance, it sounds like it's low. When, um, the, the progress measure we're proposing here is to look at the percent of students reaching their, um, projected growth measure for the NWEA MAP test. On average, throughout the nation, 50% of the students will reach their pro, uh, their growth projection and 50% of the students will not reach their growth projection, because it's the median number for the students that they have normed in that area. So starting with our baseline of 50%, uh, in talking with NWEA MAP, when a district has 50% um, of students meeting their growth measure, essentially their, um, achievement will stay the same, stay static. But we don't want our achievement to stay the same. We do want it to increase, so that we can make those increases into the goals that y'all saw earlier. So what we've done here is start, um, increasing above 50%, so 51% for this coming school year, gradually going up to about 55%. So that way, our students are more than 50%, more than the national norm, are reaching that, uh, projected goal. That way, we are accelerating our achievement over the years. Um, once, we will fill in that 2025 baseline line right there with data once our students have taken both the BOY. And then we also have to have them take an MOY, because you can't show growth on your first test. So, once we have the MOY data, we'll be able to, uh, fill in the baseline information for this, um, chart. You might notice that all the student group information has, that their goal is set at 55% over the course of the years. Basically, because growth, unlike achievement, is, is a more level playing field for each student. Because some students may be growing from a very low to, you know, they may be growing from low, they, and they can grow a little bit, and then we have our highest kids and they can grow as well. So it's more of a level playing field there. So that's why we've proposed that 55% across all the categories. And that is what we are looking for, for both the K through three math and RLA, uh, progress measures. Now we move into our CCMR specifics.
So our first progress measure, as we identified earlier, is in that TSI criteria. Where we have set this goal, um, as proposed, is that the students that are in TSI criteria, we would have at least 60% of our graduating class that would meet that college readiness. That's pretty in line with the state. That's also in line with where our projections are. That's still a lot of growth. That's 13%, which is around, about on 1,000 graduates, 150, 130, right? And so that's huge. And so that's our TSI criteria one. Uh, our industry-based certification and completers, I do want to note here, we set our baseline using the 2027 accountability. And the reason for that is, is in order to evaluate this progress measure yearly, we had to kind of go back in our baseline. Our actually baseline in 2025 is 30%, because the indicator is different. CCMR is one that changes, I almost want to say daily, but we'll just use that it changes yearly right now. And so we know that for the accountability year '27 is where we are today. So that it would be sitting at 8%. We still are, are in that goal-driven process that we want to finish at 30% with our career-ready students. That's a lot of students with a lot of opportunities. And then our final progress measure of 3.3 is that economically disadvantaged graduate. This is a large population for us, and we want to ensure that we're impacting them positively. And so by honing in on this and, and evaluating this data annually, we are, we're just putting that at the forefront.
Dr. Taylor, did you tell us that we, or, or maybe Lauren, you mentioned it in the subcommittee meeting, that we were at an even higher number now. What's the percentage for the economically disadvantaged, ECODIS?
For the district.
The last time I looked at it, which would have been about probably a month ago, we were, well, it wouldn't have changed, because the school year's ended. It, we were at approximately 44%.
Okay, that's what I thought. And it was 40, but 4%, I mean, is within there, but still.
So I can kind of give you a little perspective for graduating class. So the graduating class of 25, there was 5,621 students. Right at 2,013 were economically disadvantaged. So that's just a large population of students. Um, and so remember, our data is PMS in the summer, so this is not our total graduates. It'll drop some, but 5,621 graduates for the cohort of 25, with 2,013 of those being economically disadvantaged.
Our last slide here is just a diagram from NWEA MAP. Excuse me. Of how that growth projection works, um, in case there was questions about it. Are there any questions about any of the progress measures or the goal setting or, or comments that y'all would like to share with us?
I'll just say in closing again, thank you all so much. I know we've been working on this, you all a whole lot longer, but us in communication since March, April, um, as a subcommittee, before we stopped working in committees. But, um, it was, this was already underway. And we're just now getting ready for you all to have it voted on in July. And I know that that's a lot of work on y'all's part, and we really, and time spent with us, and we really appreciate it.
I have just one question. I know that it's best practice to only have three goals. Do you know of any other district that has four or five goals for HB3?
I have not seen any. I've looked at a couple from other districts to see if they were doing something that was significantly different. We also have templates from TEA that they provided when, um, they rolled out, um, HB3 back in 2019. And none of those templates involved having more than three goals. So one of the reasons for just having the three is because there are the three main measures that HB3 is trying to target, which is basically starting with a strong foundation in literacy, a strong foundation in math. So that first year that they take STAR in third grade for math and reading. And then to finish strong with our, our career and college-ready graduates. That was sort of the inspiration of, of the, the, the three roles. So I haven't seen anyone who's done something different.
Thank you, that's a very good answer. I have one more question for you. Um, so, uh, the HB3 goals are aligned in our DIP though, correct? They are embedded in our DIP. And so for our last round, we overachieved our HB3 goals, but our DIP didn't reflect the change. Oh, I don't know how to explain it. So if you go to the student achievement, I think it's the goal number one, it, it still showed that we were going to achieve less than we had already achieved. Does that make sense? Am I explaining that correctly?
It does. So the state recommends that we do not change the goals and that if for some reason, like because there was a large legislative change or something like that, that made something no longer relevant or something like that, that we would, basically, we would need to go through this similar process again. So since that had not happened, they can maintain their goals. Now, those were, of course, they were shooting for higher. They didn't want to revert back to a lower number. But the, the, the state recommends that we maintain the same goals for the five years.
I guess the struggle that I had is that on our district improvement plan, right, that our number one student achievement goal was, we had already met it. So what's the point of having an improvement goal if we've already met it? Logically, I am clearly not an educator, I'm a layperson. Logically, that does not make sense. Is there not a way for us to, if we were to overachieve, to fix that in our district improvement plan goals? I hope I'm making sense.
You are.
Okay, thank you. To the, to the laypeople in the.
To me. I mean, it'd be the same thing as, as in your sales world. If you've achieved your goal, you're not going to just go, okay, we've achieved it, and, and you're not going to renew it and, and push your staff to try to.
That would never fly.
Right. So I, I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying. Why, why would we not want to make that change? So.
I'm not really clear what you're referring to, but what I, I think you may be referring to is, is the five-year goal that was met previously in the DIP.
Correct.
And to mark that goal, from my knowledge of what we're looking at, we're also looking at the strategies. The strategies are the individual student needs and the work that goes into that goal. And that doesn't stop. If they had achieved the goal, that whatever the percentage was, each formative review happens roughly every nine weeks. We're still doing the work. We're still moving the needle. It doesn't matter that we've reached that overall goal. We're still addressing student needs through our strategies. And that work continues all year, if that makes sense.
So if I'm understanding correctly, what you're saying is, is even though we've achieved it, we don't change the number on the paper or on the report. We're still doing the same strategies and keeping moving forward. It's just the number isn't changing.
What I would say to that is that those of us that are community members, that won't make sense to us. That might make sense to educators, but that does not make sense to the community, right? If, if we're striving for, um, you know, improving literacy outcomes, for instance, that doesn't make sense to look at that. Like, you look at the district improvement plan as, I think it's called the baby, right? It's the, it's, it's, it's really important. And our number one goal that is on the district improvement plan has already been met. So it just, it, logically, it just doesn't make sense. So I don't know if there's a way to, you know, I know that there's a lot of legalities when it comes to the district improvement plan, I understand that. But if there's not a way to denote that it is an HB3 goal and it's already been met, I don't know.
I think that, um, it could be frustrating for people as well to keep moving the bar. Like, okay, you met your goal, never mind, you know, like have that keep going. But I think if we did something like, you know, goal met and exceeded by this amount, it might be.
I would say even, yes, there's bragging rights there. And we didn't take, you know, we didn't take up on those bragging rights of overachieving a goal. I agree with that. And I don't want to move the goalpost. I understand why you set a five-year goal and then you stick with it, right? You don't move the goalposts, I understand that. But, but yes, to your point, that, that makes good sense.
I can speak on CCMR real quickly. When you look at our historical data, it changed so often in those five years. If you'll notice, we actually knew we were going to hit the 2024 goal, because the, the indicators were in line. But we knew we would be a 76. So we had actually projected it out over five years, even though we knew we'd drop, because we knew in the class. because we knew in the class of 24, the indicators were drastically changing. And so I can foresee, these are board goals, and if you tell me that you want me to go to a 78, I will definitely take that back to our team and we'll work on it. And that's the way I can speak on CCMR.
I'm personally pleased with the goals as laid out, the draft. I'm not sure about the rest of the board, but.
Go back to the reading. So if you're referring to the reading, Trustee May, one of the things that we could denote in our DIP is that we've met the yearly target, but we continue to work on the strategies. I think that makes sense, the way the public sees it, because I'm not sure if they see all of the different pieces that happens underneath that big goal. But, I mean, that's an easy fix, to make sure that the public understands that although we've met that goal, we are still working towards improving student outcome.
I think that would be fantastic. Thank you. Thank you for understanding that. I know I didn't explain that well. I appreciate it. Are there any other questions or comments?
No, and thank you very much. I know we're all waning. I know we're into the lunch hour, and we've been here since breakfast hour, so I apologize. We're on to the last item. I think, I, I don't know how long it'll take, but I don't think it'll take that long.
But, President Odenweller, we don't have a quorum now.
Yes, we do. Trustee Horton is still here.
Oh, she's still there.
She's still there. That's the only reason why I knew we could continue when we were dropping.
Sorry, I forgot.
That's all right. But that was a good point, because we have to, like, keep all, all of us in check here these days. We're all transitioning and shifting and.
Kudos to Trustee Horton for sticking with it on vacation.
Amen to that, because we would have possibly been, although we're not, we're, we're receiving information, I don't know if legally, I'd have to look this up, I don't know off the top of my head, if we didn't have a quorum, what we would have had, we would have had to have stopped, so. All right, thank you. We're now on to legal item, item number four, legal, consider and possibly adopt. We're not adopting today, we're just receiving, just so you know. Board policy FD, local admissions, I'm not even going to read it all. Dr. Povich, please.
Good afternoon, President Odenweller, members of the board, and Dr. Landry. I appreciate your time this, this afternoon to talk about Senate Bill 401 and its implications for the school district. So I wanted to give you a brief history of how we got here. So back in 2021, we had House Bill 547 that was enacted, and basically, it told school districts that you can permit homeschool students to participate in your UIL activities. And you were also, you had the option of deciding what particular UIL activities would that be. To be clear, that is usually athletics, fine arts, and it also could be your academic UIL team. So this was the state saying that it is permissible to allow homeschool students to participate. You had to opt in at that time by August 1st and declare it as a district with UIL, and you also had to specify in what particular programs. So you saw some districts would say just the JV and below, they did not allow varsity. Some, it was just a junior high. When this first rolled out, I think there was somewhere around a little less than 30 districts across the state of Texas. There was nobody in the greater Houston area that was participating at that time. It does remind us that in there, that while a homeschooler participates, remember there are academic requirements for a student to participate in UIL. In this particular one, it reminds the district that you do not have any control over the academic side of the homeschool that's left to the parents. So the parents are responsible for the academic oversight. And the other part, and this last bullet on this slide here is very interesting, and I, I'm glad that they put it in there, because it says if you start off in a public school and then decide to withdraw and become a homeschooler, you cannot participate back in to the public school for UIL activities. And you would ask, well, why would that be in there? That's a key, because let's say I am a student in a public school, and now I am not meeting my academic requirements to participate in UIL. You, the UIL has set up such that I can't withdraw, become a homeschooler, and say I'm passing, and I can go back onto the team and participate again. So I, I believe that's the spirit of what that last bullet is staying there. So if you withdraw from a public school in that particular school year, you cannot participate from, as a homeschooler for the remainder of the school year. UIL added an amendment back in 2021. This is some of the key parts of it to give us some clarifications. It did limit that it's to four years, and as I said before, concurrent years from the time the student is a ninth grader. Also specified, UIL says repeatedly, it is up to the district to determine which programs a home, homeschool student can participate in. But you are still required to make sure that the homeschool student has the same criteria as an enrolled student. And so that's the 60 minutes per day, you cannot violate that rule, and so forth. Again, it says it's a local school decision, and I think the fourth bullet down there is probably another important part. It says homeschool students cannot participate in both in a public school as well as a homeschool program. So for example, I cannot go and play football for a homeschool league and then turn around in the spring and play basketball for the local public school. And at this time, and I should have pointed this out before, students could only participate, a homeschool student, in the public school that they are zone two. So you didn't, it wasn't a free-for-all where you could go to any public school, it had to be the school that you were the residence of. And so then the homeschool student would have to go through the same process that we enroll students. They would have to prove residency, immunizations, all that had to be implemented as well. So in 2023, House Bill 3078 came out, and one of the arguments against this, a lot of districts said, is there is no funding for it. Well, they have offered $1,500 per student per UIL activity. Again, this is an opt-in, you still had to elect a district by August 1st, and you can go to the UIL website, and it will list out the school districts that have opted in. This really, and I've heard the term move the needle, it really didn't move the needle much. I just looked again at last year's, there were 46 school districts across the state of Texas that participated, none in the Houston area. When I was looking for a 6A, someone who has a 6A, Hato, Home of the Hippos, is the one 6A school that I could find that was participating. It's a one high school district. What I see is, some of the districts that participated were facing declining enrollment, and so they were looking at ways to add into their programs. So that brings us to where we are at now, Senate Bill 401. Remember, I've been saying all these other bills, it was an opt-in. Senate Bill 401 is an opt-out, so it's a very different program here. It becomes effective this school year, and it's up to the league, and that's what Senate Bill 401 says, up to the league to determine when you have to make a decision. Well, the league is UIL. And UIL has pushed back and said, school districts have till September 1st for '25, '26 to make a decision. And a year afterward, we were back to the August 1st deadline. But remember, it's an opt-out program. So what it means is, right now, every school district is required to let homeschoolers participate in their UIL programs unless you opt out prior to September 1st of this year, August 1st in the following years. There's another provision there here, and I think this is the important part at the very end as well on this. The bill also grants that, let's say, take the example, that we decide not to opt out, Conroy's D can permit homeschool students to participate, but the surrounding districts around us decide to opt out. It, the Senate Bill 401 says, if you're a student and your local school district has opted out, then you're permitted to go to the nearest district that has not opted out. So what that means is if Conroy's D does not opt out, and everybody else around us does, then we would have to not only be obligated to the homeschool students within, that live within Conroy's D, but also homeschool students that are near us outside of our district. So that, that's just something to keep in. That's different than, I think, from the other bills that we've seen in the past. All right, comparison group, I've looked at these. Again, I've stated before, none of the other districts around us have participated, have opted in the past. Preliminary talks with other athletic coordinators or directors from around, no one's in favor of including homeschool students right now, and I'll give you some discussion points why, what I believe, looking at it. First off, 6A programs were extremely competitive. It's very difficult to make the volleyball team at any of our schools right now. So we're at, if we allow, we do not opt out, we're allowing homeschoolers in, that's more students that are eligible for our programs. We are not looking to be more competitive than we already are, or we're already there at the peak, in my opinion. It also requires extra eligibility checks on our directors and our coaches. Remember, I talked about the 60 minutes per day. You also have to ensure that those students, when they're not at your school, that they are not having private coaches and violating UIL rules. You have grade checks and monitoring outside of the school, that's got to be conducted by the coach and director. Minor thing, but not on some campuses, how's a kid going to get there? Parents are going to have to drop them off, and/or the school's going to have to provide parking. Homeschool students can't attend courses then as well. So you're going to have students who are not enrolled in your class coming in and out of your building throughout the day to attend the fine arts program or the athletic program that corresponds with the UIL program that they are participating in. We still will not receive full funding for the homeschool students. And then I, we already have something in place, in my opinion, we have the CSD virtual school through grade 11, and we do have athletes right now and so forth that are participating in our UIL programs at their resident high school while they're attending the virtual school. So we do have a measure in place that makes us better, I think, inclusive on that side. Again, based on our discussion with athletic directors, I'm not so sure, I can't tell you what all the other districts are going to be, but there is the risk that if we don't opt out, we will be the one school district available to everybody outside of our district as well. Think about our current transfer process. It's very hard, if you live outside of CSD, to attend CSD schools. Very few options that we permit. Senior courtesy is one of them, and a staff member that lives outside, or lives outside of the district. That's only the two ways. This would be another way that people outside of the district then could participate in our school programs. So that's something to keep in mind. I was curious to see what taps, that is kind of the UIL equal, if you will, in the private school. They do not allow homeschool students to participate in their programs. And then the other thing that's a little scary, and I looked this morning, they've have, they have actually updated since yesterday, last night when I looked. This morning, they had a few more things, but they're still trying to define what exactly is participation, and what does that look like for this first year. If you look at the Texas High School Coaches Association, they have nine bullets on their site of why they're against homeschoolers participating in their UIL programs. I picked what I thought were the three. They seem somewhat redundant, the nine of them, but when you look at these three, it's a lack of regulatory oversight. The district, by law, we cannot regulate the academic side, the attendance side, and so forth, of the student, like we do for students that would be enrolled in our programs. To some extent, you're creating an uneven playing field. You're holding the students that are enrolled in your school district to a higher standard than the students, let me correct that, possibly a higher standard than students that are in the homeschool. There is not that overseeing accountability, and it's, it is an unfair competitive advantage because we know our schools, our students that are enrolled in our schools have so many hours of school they have to attend, they can't be practicing during the day at that time. So that's some of the things, you can read the paragraph there, they have that on their website, of why without enrollment, there should not be eligibility because of the educational accountability that is lacking here, and it creates an inequity between those students enrolled and those students that are, aren't enrolled. And my personal opinion, and this is just me, and maybe it's, I know I'm getting old in my time and that, but the, and, and not that we have a name on the front of a fine arts suit or dress that we're going to performance for UIL, but in our athletics, to me, the name on the front of the shirt still means something. And so when I'm representing that school, in my personal opinion, it's my personal opinion, we should be enrolled in the school to represent that school community. However, it is the board's decision, we respect your decision, and we will do and honor that decision that is made. So that is the information I have for you this afternoon. Please share, ask any questions, I'll try to answer them the best I can for you.
Okay, we have four of us still here, Trustee Horton, and Semler, and May. Do either, any of you have any discussion, comments, questions?
I know that in our budget presentation earlier, they noted that we don't know about ESAs. So I just think it's important to note that with the ESAs, we could potentially be getting a large number of students from all over, and then that could go up considerably once the ESAs are implemented, because then we'd have more people coming, so.
Are, are you saying financially, it's a concern for you, if we were to opt in?
If we opted in, yes. I don't, I don't know how the, how you would handle that, many students coming if every other district opted out, considering it would continue to go up.
That was a concern of mine as well, when I was reading through the bill and trying to decipher through it. I'm, I'm concerned if we were to be the only district, and of course, the largest district in the area, what would we be setting ourselves up? We, we don't even know how, just take our district alone, we don't understand what the impact will be yet. We haven't studied that or prepared for that. So let alone any other students from other areas, even just coming for tryouts. I mean, we're not guaranteeing them, as our speaker said earlier, we're not guaranteeing them a spot, but how many more influx of students could we potentially have trying to try out for a team? Then the, the third part of that caveat to me is, do we run the risk of stacking teams? Could, not that I'm saying we would do this, but could we have students say they were, do homeschooling from another area that's a stellar athlete come play on the Woodlands football team? And now we're stacking teams with homeschoolers that are coming from around us that could be stacking that team to be an unfair advantage in competition? I mean, it's just thoughts that came to me, that we don't even know what this would look like at this point.
And President Odenweller, that's, as a parent of kids in the district and that, it's something we would have to face administratively and as a board. Are we going to be able to tell our parents who have kids enrolled in our schools that, yes, your kid's on the sideline or not even on the team because of kids outside of the district or homeschoolers coming in? That's, I don't know, I have a hard time with that, in my opinion.
Trustee May?
Yes, I agree with Trustee Semler's assertion about the ESAs. We don't know exactly what that's going to look like, and, you know, the market is changing, the, the playing field is changing, speaking of athletics, but also I just want to clarify, I do know quite a few homeschool students that are now adults in our society, and they are highly intelligent.
Yes.
So I, I wouldn't say that, that the standard is less for homeschool, I would say it's different, and, and that counts as well, though, but, but I just want to clarify, I know a lot of homeschool students that are incredible students, so.
Do y'all, are you, Trustee Horton, did you have something you wanted to say?
I'm in agreement with everything that's been said. I think it would be unfair to our students that are enrolled to accept students from outside, not held to the same standards, so I'm in agreement with what everyone else is saying.
Dr. Landry, I'd like to open it up to, do you have anything else to add?
You know, I think Dr. Povich did a fantastic job of kind of highlighting, you know, the concerns that we have, and we, we can debate whether or not it would be a financial burden on us, you know, when you, when you add in the costs of the uniforms and the materials, the instruments for the fine arts people, the music and the supplies, not to mention the travel costs associated with transporting kids to events. We can debate whether or not that's going to actually, what kind of burden that's going to land on us, given that, the partial allotment. And, and we can, we can talk about the obligation that we're going to face if we are the island of the only school district, and, and the indications are that we will be the only one or one of the only ones if we don't, don't opt out, and we simply don't have the, a way to know what that's going to look like for us, and we are, we're not prepared for a huge influx. Because, you know, at the end of the day, even if the, let's say, the, the. Because, you know, at the end of the day, even if the, let's say, the, the money offset that they send us allows us to hire more coaches, we got to remember that our coaches are teachers first, for the most part. And that offset allotment may not allow us to add staffing. So if we can't add staffing units to add additional coaches, then we're talking about teachers giving up academic periods to service athletic periods. And, and that, that's not, you know, making classroom sizes bigger is not a goal of ours. So, you know, there would, there would be issues there. But then at the end of the day, you know, we, we've taken into consideration the, the potential negative impact that it'll have on our students. Because even if you add coaches, and you add more B-teams or C-teams or more JV cheer or whatever you add, there will be only one varsity squad. And there are only so many spots on that varsity squad. There are only so many marching blocks in a band. There are only, there's only one lead actor in the one-act play. So those non-enrolled students who may or may not have a competitive advantage over our kids will be, will be, will have the opportunity to negatively impact some of our enrolled students who this might be their opportunity for, for a future. And, and I think as we progress in this conversation, those things need to stay in the forefront of the conversation. And how will this, because it will impact if we opt in, how will it negatively impact those kids who, who are enrolled and, and don't have the option financially or whatever to do homeschool, private school? And this may be their only opportunity. So that would be a concern of mine.
My only other comment on it does kind of go to what you were saying, Dr. Povich. We've, we've got history of, of, what was it? Dr. Spears said earlier, she's been a Highlander for 20 years and now she's going to be a War Eagle. That's not going to shift easily. And, and when we've built in every one of these feeders, a pride, a branding, a whole philosophy and mindset, and it, it pumps through our halls. It is who we are in those schools. And so as a parent of a, of a former college athlete, I, I understand, and he was a TAPS player. So I fully get the gambit of it all. I would never have expected my child to go from being where he was to being allowed to play on another team for, for his, you know, his successes. I mean, he's, he's got to be all in or, you know, or in something, all in somewhere. And so I, I, I know we're not here to make a decision tonight. Well, we've, we've said what, is there anything else, or today? I'm used to it being night, although we're getting there. Anything else you all want to say before we close on this?
Just one last thing. Thank you for bringing up the virtual school, the virtual academy. I mean, we, we've talked about the, the beautiful plans that we have for our virtual academy. And, and that is a good alternative as well. But thank you for bringing that up because we're excited about them.
Yes. And we have kids that start in athletics in seventh grade. And one of our ones that has been in the Leadership Academy and then the, and he's now going into eighth grade. And he, he wants to graduate from the virtual school or virtual academy and wants to continue playing with his neighborhood friends. And he's still enrolled in Conroe ISD. And we have athletes that are enrolled in the, the virtual school. And they are competing nationally in other sports, you know, on their own, not in our district. So we have both spectrums and just, yes, thank you for mentioning them. Okay.
I just wanted to say, I think our number one goal is, and I, I think I can speak for everyone, is to how to best support our Conroe ISD students. And I think that we need to keep that in mind as we go forward. And I think that allowing other students to come in from possibly all over the area does not keep that in mind.
Thank you both for that. Is there anything else before we move on to an, I think we're at adjournment. Yes. Okay. Anything else? I entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved. Second.
Yes, we stand adjourned. The time is 1:00 PM.